Everybody here, one, two, three, four, five. Where's the others? Six, seven, we're all there.
Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Here. Festerson?
Here.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Mulligan? Stothard? Mr. President.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation given by Councilmember Pete Festerson.
(Inaudible) to the flag under the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought I'd just keep things lighthearted this morning. I just received a few letters, actually about 35 letters, from a class I spoke to recently on Dr. Seuss Day. A number of us did that. And a couple of these kind of caught my attention. I thought I'd just read out loud for the group before we start here. This is from the Colombian Elementary School, third grade class. This is letters from Schuyler. It says, "Mr. Festerson, thank you for coming to our school. I agree with the two other kids. Could you do something more about those potholes?" Anyway, thanks for reading the book, Aliens Love Underpants, to us. And thanks for answering our questions. And thanks for talking to us about the City Council. And the second one is from Bridget. It says, "Thank you for coming to our school. It was funny when you read, 'Aliens Love Underpants.' The City Council is very important, and I will try to do my part. Sincerely, Bridget."
I didn't know you knew so much about them.
I learned a lot that day, actually.
I hope there was no correlation between the two.
City Clerk served by publication in the Daily Record on March 18th, North River, Council Reg. City Council Meeting, March 22nd, 2011. A current copy of Open Meetings Act is posted on the East Wall of the legislative chambers.
If you have a cellphone or a pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate. And I won't say anything more about underpants. Mr. Clerk.
We'll take items five through nine first. It's one zoning case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located southwest of South HWS Cleveland Boulevard and Blue Sage Parkway from R6 to DR Development Reserve District. Six is to rezone to R4, single-family residential district, high density. Seven is to rezone to R6, low-density multifamily residential district. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eight is Resolution to Replat Transmitter here in the title of Pacific Streets West. Replat seven is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And nine is Resolution Amendment to Subdivision Agreement with SNID 539 is hereby approved.
Public hearing for items five through nine begin now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Mark Westergaard with ENA Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street. This is a small plat that takes a large multifamily lot, splits it into 23 single-family lots, and then the remaining area is left for R6 apartments. So we would request your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Mulligan? Stothard? Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero. Item number 10, ordinance to amend Sections 55, 652, 658, and 659 to correct a typographical error to clarify the permitted use in the flood fringe overlay district to add campground use type in the floodway overlay district regulations. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 10 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Roll call. Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number 11, ordinance to amend Section 55-822 regarding bulletin boards to repeal Section 55-822. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And B is a communications opposing.
Public hearing on item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number 12, ordinance vacating a triangular portion of Chicago Street located between 11th and 12th Streets adjacent to Hilton Hotel. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing was held on March 15th. Second? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Resolution that the plat entitled Pfeiffer's Edition located at 13412 North 47th Street is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mark Westergaard, ENA Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street. Just here to answer any questions. Did you have any?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Roll call. Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Liquor, item number 21, Arena Sports Bar &amp; Grill, 3809 North 90th Street. Request permission for an addition of the present Class C liquor license of a volleyball court approximately 120 by 100 to the east. This was laid over from last week, and you have communications opposing. And the zoning Board of Appeals held their request for a waiver, and you have conditions on that waiver that they were granted.
Public hearing was continued to today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
Cassie Gryson, Project Extra Mile, 11606 Nicholas Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Project Extra Mile, we're here in opposition of the expansion of Arena Sports Bar &amp; Grill liquor license in light of their violation history. That is according to Liquor Control Commission's website, which illustrates a disregard to protect young people in the larger public health. They have a sale to a minor violation 2001, sale to minor 2003, serve sale to intoxicated 2005, minor consuming possession on premise 2006, and another sale to minor 2010. We would just suggest that there be some level of accountability for this establishment in light of that violation history, perhaps a mandatory server seller training as a result.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Mulligan?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. I've had a number of concerns from the people that live in the area concerning the noise or the possibility of the noise because of the volleyball activity. And the verbiage here from the planning board, "One of the restrictions is no recorded music or speaker music after 10:30 p.m. outside."
He is here. Why don't you come down?
Oh, please.
Sorry, I didn't know when I was supposed to get up.
That's okay. Your name?
Brian Rogge, owner of the Arena Sports Bar.
Okay. He can ask you a question.
Hello, Brian.
Hi.
Brian, the neighbors are concerned about the noise, and we've explained the changes in the plans with the building of the fence and the other improvements. But the item number five, "No recorded music or speaker music after 10:30 p.m. outside." We would like to expand that, that the volleyball activities end at 10:30 as well.
Our last session of volleyball begins at 9:30.
Okay.
So they have a one-hour timeframe, so it is scheduled to be over at 10:00.
Okay. But I mean, I need a commitment from you that they will be over at 10:30 p.m.
Yes.
Okay. And then we would also like to add a requirement, to add the mandatory training, servers training, that the lady just spoke of.
Can I discuss what she had brought up?
Certainly.
We've had three fine offenses in 11 and 1/2 years of business. The last one, you know, we put in extra, basically it was a situation where our door guy ID'd he was doing his job. And that was, you know, the last offense within eight years. He told the person they could not drink. The person went around the corner out of sight from that person and was actually apprehended by our door guy and was on his way out the door. It was so questionable that the sergeant of the sting and everybody came in and rewatched our recordings that happened over a matter of 15 seconds, and the officers were not even in the building when we were already escorting the person out. I chose not to fight that in Lincoln, but that is our only finable offense in the last eight years. That, I don't, the other things were questionable, warnings that she had brought up, where there was no basis behind it. So she's, yeah, I don't know, you know, I have, I actually have our record here if you, if it makes a difference. But in accordance with that, what we've done is we've taken all power. Our door guy still IDs people. Everybody after 9:30, there's no minors allowed in the establishment. We have live music every weekend. And then on top of that, our bartenders and servers then again ID everybody all over again. They're responsible for IDing anybody they serve. So that's the extra step that we've put in to combat that. Because when talking to them in Lincoln, they said, you know, "The door guy sometimes confuses things and actually makes it tougher." And in that case, it did. I mean, he was doing his job and, I guess, kind of a long story there, but that's, that was our offense.
Well, it sounds like they wouldn't have trouble passing the training, then.
Oh, no, I have no trouble with that. I'm just, I'll do, you know, anything you guys recommend, but...
Okay. Okay. Thank you. With those two stipulations, then.
All right. Thank you.
Sir? Anything else?
Ah, yeah. Well, just to clarify, you do agree that? Is that, that is correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
Why don't you state on here, you may have other questions. It's okay.
I do agree.
Now, you do agree to the stipulations that you did at the zoning Board of Appeals to install an eight-foot-high, C-shaped, all on the east side, half of the north and half the south side, solid fence, light poles, and speakers to be placed on the east side, and facing toward the building, the lighting on the building to be designed so that there will no light spillage out to the adjacent property, no live music outside, no recorded music or speakers, music after 10:30 p.m. outside, and a volleyball dates to run from April 15th to October 15th, along with his other two conditions of everything, the volleyball ending at 10:30 and server training.
Correct. Yes, I agree.
Where are the dates again?
April 15th to October 15th.
April 15th to October 15th.
I did get that copy from the zoning Board of Appeals, and it was all correct.
Okay. Good.
Is that it?
Well, there may be more questions. Just hold on.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Stothard?
Thank you. I just want to clarify. Mr. Rogge, you said you had only three offenses in the last eight years?
Three fine offenses through the Nebraska Liquor Commission.
Fine, but are you denying these other instances and violations that the woman from Project Extra Mile brought up?
I'm not discarding that. It's just that those were warnings that we received from the Liquor Commission. And when I get those warnings, they say, you know, "This person may or may not have been at your establishment. That's why we're not fining you for the situation." That's what I know of it. It would be somebody saying that they were, you know, after the fact, or if they got a DUI or got in trouble, they said they were, I don't know, I'd have to look through my record. They said they were at our establishment, or if, you know, so they weren't actually, it wasn't a, it wasn't a situation where we, you know, got busted on a sting, or that we were actually serving a minor in our place. It was basically a, you know, it was a warning.
Okay. Thanks. I'm going to ask the woman from Project Extra Mile to come back, please. Thank you.
Cassie Gryson, Project Extra Mile, 11606 Nicholas Street.
Cassie, thank you. Just review those again.
According to the Liquor Control Commission's website, they list the violation history for every licensee. And what you have here is three sales to a minor in 2001, 2003, and 2010, which do have citations for. There are letters of warning, as he indicated, for the serve sale to intoxicated, which was in 2005, and then a minor consuming possession on premise. That was also a letter of warning them in 2006.
Okay. So there has been three sell to minors?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Rogge, come back up. Now, you have to repeat your name. I'm sorry.
Brian Rogge.
Okay. And you have agreed for the server training, but I just want to let you know that these serve to minors are disturbing to me. And, you know, I hope that you will do everything you can to not only agree to the stipulations that we put on there, but to assure us that that's, you're going to do everything you can in your power, that that's not going to happen again, warning or no warning.
Yeah, it is something definitely, I mean, that we're not promoting. It's not something that we, you know, obviously...
Well, you're responsible for it.
Of course. You know, and we do everything in our power and try to curtail our procedures, which we did on this most recent one, under their direction, to continue to ID after the door guy IDs. But, you know, there's, yeah, we...
Okay. I just want to make sure you know you are responsible for this, and that this, if, warning or not, you're breaking the law if you're serving to a minor.
Correct.
So we want to make sure that those situations are corrected and don't happen again.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Motion to approve with stipulations. Roll call. Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted with stipulations. Item 22, Oasis Hookah Bar and Cafe, 315 South 16th Street. New application, new location. It's a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing was continued to the day on item number 22. Are there any proponents?
Jamel Neemee Cole, owner of Oasis.
Jesse Hill, owner of Oasis Hookah Bar. Basically, we're applying for a Class C liquor license today because we've been operating underneath a tobacco-only retail since we opened back in July 16th. Since we've opened, we've had no record or no disturbances filed against us by the police or by the Signal ADA, the security company that goes by. We're applying because as we stand right now, we're tobacco-only retail, which only allows for us to serve tobacco products, that being hookah or the hookah pipes that we serve. With the cigar bar, with us getting the Class C liquor license, that's the first step that we need in order to sell any other beverage, whether that be bottled water, coffee, tea. We need a Class C liquor license in order for us to become a cigar bar, which will allow us to serve beverages. Now, our main intent is not to, our hookah has been our main product since we opened, and anything else will fall secondary to it. We were even, we were even in talks with our landlord with even stricken, just limiting the alcoholic beverages and only serving non-alcoholic drinks. Our main goal is to not serve liquor or alcohol. Our main goal is just for us to be able to serve beverages to our clientele.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Welsh. I live at 5611 Howard Street in Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm the president of GASP, the group to alleviate smoking pollution of Nebraska. And I am against issuing a cigar bar license, or a liquor license, I guess is what you would be considering today, to the Oasis Hookah Bar, because they have been illegally selling tobacco in that business since the day they opened. Let me repeat that. They have been illegally selling tobacco in that business since the day they opened. They are in violation of Omaha City Ordinance Article 7, Section 12-145, which says, and I quote, "It shall be a violation of this law to sell tobacco products in any form except original factory-wrapped packages," unquote. When Oasis employees take tobacco out of a factory-wrapped package, mix it with flavors, and give it, and give pieces of it to customers to smoke, they're in violation of this law, this city ordinance. According to the ordinance, they may be fined $200 for the first offense and up to $500 for subsequent offenses. They may also be fined for their violation of another section, 12-144, of the same ordinance, which requires a decal to be on every door of every business that sells tobacco. This missing decal gives people a phone number to call if someone sees minors purchasing tobacco. I've been in that business and seen very, very young-looking people smoking hookah, but of course, I couldn't ask them how old they were. So before you consider giving them a license to sell alcohol, I think you should make sure that they are not in violation of this city ordinance. GASP and I helped pass this original law in 1993 and helped revise it in 2003. And do you realize how poorly the Nebraska cigar bar law was written? This law, in Section 53-103.08, says that cigar bars have the following restrictions, that it has to have a Class C license, which they're asking for today, they may not sell food, it must generate at least 10% of its gross revenue from the sales of tobacco and tobacco-related products, and except for cigarette sales, that may not include, be included in this 10%, and this percentage is very low, way too low, in my opinion. They may not discount the price of alcoholic drinks by combining their sale of, with tobacco or tobacco-related products. They must have a walk-in humidor on the premises, but this law does not require them to have any cigars in that humidor. They don't have to sell tobac, they don't have to sell cigars at all. It may not allow people to smoke cigarettes inside. So you could have a cigar bar that doesn't sell or even have cigars on their premises, and they may not even allow cigars to be smoked inside. Cigar smoke and hookah smoke may be incompatible, just like cigarettes and cigar smoke is, according to our state law. A law that is connected to the cigar bar law is the Nebraska Clean Indoor Air Act. It is connected in the Clean Indoor Air Act in Section 715730 exemptions, where the Clean Indoor Air Act allows smoking in cigar bars. An interesting side note is that the Clean Indoor Air Act also allows smoking in in-home daycares. The Clean Indoor Air Act does not allow smoke from smoking hotel or motel rooms to infiltrate into areas where smoking is prohibited under the Clean Indoor Air Act. But this poorly-written state law does allow smoke from a cigar bar to infiltrate other businesses and homes with no restrictions. And I'm going to deviate, if you're reading along with me. Your former city ordinance, your former city law on smoke-free, the smoke-free ordinance also had this provision where if smoke went from one business into another business, that the offending business had to stop that smoke from going in. And there was a business on Maple Street that the police found were in violation of that part of your city, former city ordinance, and we eventually got that business to close down because there was no way in a strip mall to stop smoke from going from one business to another. A similar problem exists here where this is just one small business in a much larger building. So if you're going to consider allowing this law-breaking Oasis Hookah Bar, and Cafe, as their title is called, to get a liquor license, I hope you will follow the lead of the court in Lincoln that recently said allowing smoking in cigar bars is illegal because it doesn't treat similar businesses in the same way. I think you should adopt an ordinance that doesn't allow smoke from a cigar bar or any other business that allows smoking to infiltrate into another business that is required to be smoke-free, or into people's homes when they live above or near a cigar bar. This language, as I said before, was in Omaha's smoke-free ordinance that you deleted from the books after the state law took effect, making just about every business smoke-free. Another thing that's not in my written notes that I just found out today after these were prepared is from, and I got this information from Irene Wolf, who works for the city, who gave me a file of all tobacco retail licenses. The Oasis Hookah Bar and Cafe lists a P.O. box on their license to sell tobacco, which is a violation of the law. Let me find it here. State law, Section 28-1422, which is the license for sale of tobacco, the application and contents, and I'll read this, quote, a written, they have to submit a written application, and then I quote, "Stating the name of the person, partnership, limited liability, company or corporation for whom such license is desired, and the exact location of the place of business." A post office box is not an exact location of a business. So at this time, I urge you to not approve this, and I also urge you to pass an ordinance to require in-home daycares to be smoke-free. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Paul Carter, C-A-R-T-E-R, 6143 Whitmore Street. I am the executive director of Pride Omaha, which is an organization that has been opposed to drug and alcohol and tobacco use by our young people. The reason I'm here today to speak in opposition is that, as you've already heard Mr. Welsh testify, I think it's very apparent that this organization, the Hookah Bar, is already in violation of the law. I'm not sure how many of you recognize exactly how a hookah works, but as Mr. Welsh described in his statement, they are in violation of the law by actually opening up the packages of crude tobacco and then mixing it with honey or molasses or some other type of fruit pulp. It contains just as much carbon monoxide, tar, and all of the carcinogen hydrocarbons that any other type of smoke. And as a matter of fact, it has higher quantities of the toxic heavy metals compared to regular cigarettes. So this business already is in violation. Now they're coming to you today, and they're asking for a liquor license. I believe this is an entire charade, and I think that they are not coming to you as a cigar bar. They have not done the construction necessary. They do not have the product. They do not have the humidor already in their place. I think they're premature of anything by coming to you today. I think that if you read the quotation in this morning's World Herald from the owner of the Oasis Bar, he basically states he's not really interested in cigars or being a purveyor of cigars, but he will do anything he has to, to get a license as a cigar bar. The present business operates where people are encouraged to bring in food, something he would not be able to sell as a retailer if he did have a liquor license. It encourages people to bring in drink, non-alcoholic drinks. Mr. Welsh has clearly stated that it is, it is not uncommon to find young people 18, 19, 20, which would mean that they've already developed a clientele of what would be underage drinkers. And so in closing, I would like to clearly state that Pride Omaha, I am also the vice president of the Metro Omaha Tobacco Action Coalition, which receives its funding through Health and Human Services and Tobacco-Free Nebraska. We are strongly opposed to this. I think it's a charade and a sham that the owner is even here applying for the licensee is because he doesn't have the business or the facility that it would call for. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. Ben Swan, 312 South 16th Street, number 506. I'm here today because we've got problems on 16th Street. I've lived in urban Omaha east of 50th Street for the last 12 years, and I've lived in downtown for the last...
Health and Human Services and Tobacco-Free Nebraska. We are strongly opposed to this. I think it's a charade and a sham that the owner is even here applying for the license he is because he doesn't have the business or the facility that it would call for. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. Ben Swan, 312 South 16th Street, number 506. I'm here today because we've got problems on 16th Street. I've lived in urban Omaha east of 50th Street for the last 12 years, and I've lived in downtown for the last four years in three different locations, and I bought a place in the Regis last year, and it's the only part of downtown Omaha where there's now, thankfully, for valid reasons, nearly continuous coverage by either Signal 88 Security or the Omaha Police Department. And so it's just, it's using our city's resources, and the reason why those resources are being deployed there is because we've got noise complaints, a lot of noise complaints, we've got a lot of the things that are going to be talked about later in this meeting today with, with fights and citations, and I would just ask that in a street that's already struggling, if Oasis Hookah Bar asked for a Class C liquor license with a restriction on selling alcoholic beverages, because they said, "We do not intend to sell alcoholic beverages," that if you do grant that to them, then grant them what they asked for today, at the most. Which would, if you do grant the liquor license, please grant it with a restriction so they can sell non-alcoholic beverages, but a restriction on the alcoholic beverages, because that's what I heard and what was recorded as being asked for today. That's all that I have on this particular matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Cassie Grayson, Project Extra Mile 11606, Nicola Street. We would echo the residents' sentiment there, that if they do, if you do grant this liquor license, that you would require that they not sell alcohol based on their, their own statements. Our concern is obviously underage patrons, they, to their own acknowledgement, indicate that three-fourths of their clientele is underage. And of course, we all know with the city ordinance, with the music venue, they would have to get that permit in order to be able to mix of-age patrons with underage. So with that, we would, if you were to grant this liquor license, we would just ask that you put that condition as well, that they not sell alcohol in light of their comments. In addition to, and perhaps Mr. Mungard could provide some clarification on this, but it's not our understanding that you would have to have a Class C liquor license in order to sell wine and tea, or, excuse me, alcohol and tea. So perhaps he could provide some clarification on that, but, but that's our understanding.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Arnold Bressler with the Old Market South Neighborhood Association. This neighborhood and commercial residence area falls into my neighborhood. We've met with a lot of the people from the neighborhood. There aren't many of you still on the board that remember the struggle we had on 10th Street when the Viaduct was closed, and had two bars, not unlike these in nature, develop and caused a lot of inconvenience, a lot of problems for the neighborhood, very similar to the problems that were brought to my attention with what's going on on 16th Street. And I think we're just moving back into a situation where we're going to have police, in that situation, we average eight to 10 cop cars every Friday, Saturday night in order to try to control the closing of that neighborhood. And eventually, we did get rid of it through special failures of the individuals that owned the bar as well as the bar, but it, it took a long time. And once it's there, it gets a lot rougher to get rid of it. So I really think you should give some consideration to figuring out what we have going on in this neighborhood before we start issuing more licenses. Thank you. Did I give you my name and address? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name is Maurice Parker. I live at 300 South 16th Street, Unit 1202. I'm a board member on the Farnham 1600 condo association board. I work at First National Bank, so I, the 16th Street corridor right there is very important to me. I walk back and forth on it every day, and I spend a lot of time out on the street. I would like to just again emphasize the same things that have been said earlier. Our main concerns right now are any additional alcohol outlets on 16th Street due to the large number of problems we have with violence and alcohol-related violence on our street. We do think that Oasis, up to this point in time, has been a good neighbor. They come to our condo association meetings, they're very helpful, we don't want to lose them as a business. So I would like to also ask if you do grant them a Class C liquor license to put the restriction on them selling alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mrs. Stoddard?
Thank you. Could Mr. Hill come back up, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Reidentify yourself.
Jesse Hill, co-owner of Oasis Hookah Bar.
Thank you. Tell us the primary purpose of your bar.
Right now, our primary purpose is just selling hookers.
I'm sorry?
Selling hookahs, the product.
Okay.
That's been our intent since we opened, that's our primary product.
Okay, but on your application, now you have put that you want to sell beverages, you want to have a DJ, you want to have open mic night, you want to have live performances from a band, so it sounds like, to me, it's a full-fledged bar.
It's not. It's more, it's more of a lounge, it's not even, it's more akin to a restaurant than anything else. People make reservations, they come in, they get a table, they order what they want, and then they leave.
But at a restaurant, you can't sell food now.
Well, no, it's akin to it. The way that we operate is more like a restaurant than like a bar. We allow people to, we do allow people to bring in their own non-alcoholic beverages and food just to appease our customers since we cannot actively offer it to them. But our main thing, we offer them entertainment as a way to get more customers in there. We do offer DJs in there, but we don't have a dance floor. There's no room for anybody to move up and dance or cause any type of nuisance since we only have enough space for the tables that are in there. I mean, any other, any statements about us being a problem in the neighborhood are completely unfounded. You can ask anybody that's lived there. We have not had any calls from the police, any calls from Signal NDA, from the security down there. We've had no complaints.
Okay. Are three-fourths of your clientele underage?
A majority of our clientele is over age.
Okay. Why are you asking for a Class C liquor license?
The only way that we're able to serve beverages, be it a bottle of water or a cup of coffee, is for us to have a Class C liquor license.
Or is that a requirement of being a cigar bar?
For it to be a cigar bar, yes. So we have to have a Class C liquor license in order to serve any beverages, and the only way we can do that is if we become a cigar bar. So the Class C is a prerequisite to cigar bar.
So the only reason you want to become a cigar bar is to sell liquor?
No, not so. We want to be able to serve, since a majority of our clientele is underage, we would just like to be able to serve them any type of non-alcoholic beverage. We currently, we give away coffee, we gave, we give away tea, we give, we used to give away juice, and that keeps them coming back, but that's an expense for us. In order for us to keep being viable as a business, we need to be able to offer more to our clientele.
Okay. Are you aware that your landlord has said that you're, he wants you to decline your request to change the use on the premises to allow for the sale of alcohol?
Yes.
And he said he is not interested in having alcoholic beverages served on the premises?
Yes, I spoke with both of them this morning. They received bad information. They believe that the way that we stand now is a tobacco-only retail that we are currently able to sell beverages. They got the info, they called somebody with the, the real estate people over Oasis Hookah Bar, and they got misinformation. I spoke with them this morning, and I explained to them in great detail that the only way that we are able to serve anything outside of hookah, we must have a Class C liquor license.
So are you telling us that your landlord is aware that you are going to be selling alcoholic beverages, and you're telling us he's okay with that?
We spoke with them, and they were talking about making an amendment in our lease so that we can get the Class C liquor license and can serve non-alcoholic, no liquor beverages.
You're saying they're just talking about it, though, right?
They're talking about it, yeah. But they, but they, when I spoke with them this morning, like I said, I spoke with them at great lengths about it, because I didn't find out about it, I got a call from the city clerk's office this morning.
Okay, thanks, thanks. And could Mr. Mungard come up?
Tom Mungard, deputy city attorney.
Mr. Mungard, both Mr. Welch and Mr. Carter spoke that it is a violation of the law to sell tobacco products in any form except original factory-wrapped packages. Could you speak to that?
Well, that is what the ordinance says. It then goes on, the next sentence is, "The sale of single cigarettes is specifically prohibited." The ordinance seems to be addressed more to breaking up packages of cigarettes and selling them singly. It certainly does not provide for what they're doing. Whether it extends that far, I couldn't really tell you. They've certainly not been cited for that, and so I can't tell you whether that is or is not a violation of that ordinance of the standard they, they do something different than what the ordinance is talking about.
Uh huh. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes, Jesse, I'd like to thank you. You don't need to come up. I'd like to thank you for reaching out to the condo associations in the neighborhood. I think you're a good, good man, and I think you have good intentions, but the way I see it, at this time, with the cloud over whether you could even have a valid lease and do this, as well as the issues going on on 16th Street right now, I'm a little concerned that if we were to grant a license, even a license that had a restriction that you couldn't sell alcohol, I don't know how far that would go, even if that's a valid restriction. To get a license that would then prohibit you from selling, to me, is convoluted. But it's nothing personal against you. I think you're a good person, it's just the business idea here. When you get a business that's really marketed and developed a clientele of minors, and then we're going to have all of a sudden a game-changing event, I think is asking for trouble. And the written business plan on your license included things like live music DJs, things that, to me, would indicate that there's room for expansion into those other activities. Whether you intend right now to do that, it's, it would give you the flexibility so that if you did it, you would have not had anything misrepresenting on your license application, but I just, I guess my, my gut feeling on this one is, is that I don't think this is the time for it. I think you have legal issues, both in your lease and on the restriction side, that maybe you should take some more time and think it through, and for that reason, I'm going to move to deny.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Mr. Mungard, please. Just one question with perhaps maybe a follow-up, I'm not sure. If, if we were to grant, and I don't know how the vote will go, I'm just not, I'm just hypothetically, if we were to grant a Class C, does that, with a, with a restriction that they could not sell alcohol, are we, can we even do that?
Thanks, Carol. My question. Yes? Holding a license gives you the privilege to sell, it doesn't mandate that you must sell. So certainly, somebody can hold a liquor license and then not sell alcohol.
I guess, well, let me be a little bit more definitive with my question. If we grant a license, and the stipulation there is that they cannot sell alcohol, can they sell alcohol in spite of our agreement on the restriction?
I'm going to say no if we go another step. If you make that a condition of the license, we would then ask the state to actually place that as a restriction on the license. If it's placed as a restriction on the license, then they cannot sell al, then they can't violate that restriction without loss of the license. At times, however, it does not get placed as a restriction on the license, and then it's just a representation to the council, a failure to keep that promise to the council would then be grounds for moving for revocation, but you'd still have to go through the revocation process. So I'm going to give you a qualified yes, that if you put that restriction on, we will work to put it on the license, and that will keep them from selling alcohol.
Okay, but that, but, but placing that restriction, if I'm hearing you correctly, placing that restriction doesn't guarantee that they, that when you get to the Liquor Control Commission, that they won't be able to sell alcohol?
It doesn't guarantee it. If the commission agrees and puts that in, on the license, then it means they won't be able to sell alcohol without having to fight with the city.
Okay. If I can have you come up again?
Yes, sir. Jesse Hill.
Jesse, if we, if we, and I'm not saying how this would go, I'm just, I'm just doing hypotheticals right now.
Right, right.
If, if, if we place the restriction, would you stipulate to that restriction when you went before the Liquor Control Commission?
Definitely would, yes.
Okay, that you wouldn't sell alcohol?
That we would not sell alcohol.
And that they would, and that they could, they could, they could place that as part of your agreement?
Yes.
In the con, in the, in the license document itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Pesterson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a couple more questions along those lines for me to, because this is certainly an oddity we've uncovered here in terms of state law and how it applies to city ordinance. Mr. Mungard, please. So to Ms. Stoddard's question, the question was, are hookahs illegal in city code right now? And I think, I would characterize your responses not expressly, so would it be accurate to say that they are in fact legal in Omaha right now? I know this isn't the only hookah operation we have in the city right now.
To my knowledge, this question hasn't come up, but certainly Mr. Welch has pointed out an ordinance that we have that does not fit well with the hookah, hookah process. Nobody, to my knowledge, nobody's been cited for violating that. I don't know whether there's been any court declaration of that. All I can say is the ordinance doesn't fit well with their process.
Okay, it may not fit well, but it doesn't make it illegal today. Would that be accurate?
Well, I can't stand here and tell you that they have or haven't been violating that ordinance. It's not a conclusion I can come to one way or the other.
And then another question is, you do have, so apparently you have to have a liquor license to sell anything, water, coffee, tea?
No. It's a combination of the smoking prohibitions and the exception for a cigar bar. If you are a tobacco, tobacco-only retail store, you can smoke there, but you can't sell anything other than tobacco products. So that's what they are right now, and that's the exception that allows them to smoke on those premises. If you then want to go over and be a cigar bar, you can sell more. You can sell pop, you can sell water, you can sell food, or you can sell other items, not food, but other items, but you have to have a Class C license. So they're trying to move from one exception in the smoking ban into another exception of the smoking ban. When they do that, they expand the products they can sell, but they have to have, they have to hold a Class C liquor license. So they, I can see why they're trying to do this.
Right.
And yes, it does work, and no, it does not require that they actually sell alcohol. It only requires that they hold the liquor license.
Right, so in order to sell, in this instance, in order to sell water and coffee and tea or juice, they need to class, they need to become a cigar bar, which means they have to get a Class C liquor license, and furthermore, the Class C liquor license would designate they can't sell liquor?
Yes, all that is very strange, but that is true.
All right.
And you know, and I would point out that certainly, I followed the discussion about the cigar bar exception, and it was always discussed in terms of it would be a place where you would both smoke cigars and consume alcohol. I don't remember anybody ever discussing that it would be a place where you just smoke and there's no alcohol, because they specifically required that you had to have this Class C license. And I think clearly, the statute assumes you're going to sell alcohol.
And the remedy to this strange turn of events is really state law?
Mr. Welch is, I agree with Mr. Welch, that the state law may not have been the best drafted law you'll ever see.
Okay. Thanks, that's the last question I have for you. And I guess just a comment to, sort of along the lines of Mr. Jarrett's comment, another, a further wrinkle is, appears to be your lease, which you're in conversations about, and it may get worked out. I guess typically, when we see these licenses come, we like to see those things figured out first, and then figure out the licensing components of what may or may not be applicable. Did you want to address that real quick? Yeah?
I had a conversation with our building owner on March 11th, and when, the way we left the conversation was that they understood that we were going to try to do it just for the non-alcoholic beverages, and we weren't aware of their, of their misinformation until this morning. Because like I said, they believed that only way, that we were right now able to sell non-alcoholic beverages without the Class C liquor license. They got bad information, that's why they sent in that letter. When I spoke with them this morning, that was kind of like, they realized, okay, I showed them the ordinances and the law and everything that says, the kind of step I said we have to do in order to sell any beverages, and they were okay with that. And so after this meeting today, we're, I'm going back with them, and we're going to discuss everything to get it written into our lease, saying that we, at the time of the lease, we are not, until or renewal of our lease, we will not be able to sell alcoholic beverages.
Okay. Thanks for that, and I guess the long comment along those lines is, should that get figured out, I think your case would be stronger if you came back and had those things ducks in a row and, and showed us a way to figure this out, maybe a little more smoothly. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mungard.
Yes?
Counsel, forgive me, I have to ask a more basic question, because I'm new to the whole hookah thing. How can we have children around secondhand smoke? How are we allowed to do that?
Because the legislature thought it would be a good idea.
Okay.
They wrote the law. All I can tell you is that that was an exception. I assume it goes along with the fact that you're talking about a place where somebody lives, and you're entitled under the state law to smoke where you live. And the fact that it's an in-home daycare doesn't make any difference.
So that answers that other question that Mr. Welch talked about in terms of indoor daycare?
Right. And the state law talks in terms of prohibitions in general, of prohibition against smoking, and doesn't really have an age limitation. It's a general one.
Okay. Thank you. Just, thank you. Comment to my colleagues.
I would not feel like to go too far.
If we're, for those of us who are going to deny the motion, actually, we haven't gotten a second yet, but I'd like to see, and I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this, but I'd like to see a letter from the landlord saying otherwise, because we're just going by one man's testimony, but nothing from the landlord themselves. So I'll yield the floor for right now.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Just a couple of other questions for Mr. Mungar. Mr. Mungar, if we, it seems like, from what I'm hearing from my colleagues here, that if we, if they could straighten out some of the issues that they have, namely, making sure that there's a letter, as Council Member Thompson talked about, a letter from the owner correcting or at least clarifying what their position is. If we denied the license, would they, would they have to start the process over again? And if we laid it over for a couple of weeks or something like that to get that straightened out, I mean, you can't lay it over?
No.
Can you lay it over, Mr.?
Bustle round city clerk. We laid it over once. We were up against our 45-day time.
I see. Okay. Okay, so, okay.
Here's what can happen. If you want to, if you want to give them time to work out the problems, you could deny, recommend denial of the license. That would trigger a hearing before the commission, probably not until May. And between now and then, if they work out their problems, and the council no longer has any opposition, we could just tell the commission that our opposition is withdrawn, and they could make their own decision.
Okay. Okay. So what would happen to the business in the meantime? It would continue to exist as is, or would it?
It would exist as is.
Okay. And then, absent the liquor license?
Correct.
Would they be in violation, as has been talked about earlier?
I couldn't answer that. I don't know the extent to which that ordinance applies to this kind of an operation. They wouldn't be able to sell alcohol until they actually got the license. And if you recommended denial today, that would be sometime after early May.
Okay. So, but the theory is, is that they could continue to operate the way they are, they would just have to get those things straightened out and take it before the Liquor Control Commission?
They would have to get their city code situation straightened out, whether they are or are not violating that code provision. With respect to the alcohol, they would have to just continue as they are now with no alcohol.
We don't have a second.
Okay. Well, if I could, Mr. President, if I could make a comment.
You still have the floor.
I think it probably, I think probably the best process would be to deny at this point, and then that way you can go before the Liquor Control Commission and then work out whatever. First of all, let me second your motion. And then, secondly, it sounds like that would be the best process to go through right now to keep you operating and to get, you know, whatever arrangements that need to be made, straightened out. And then you could do it before the Liquor Control Commission, and that would be the place you could do it. And hopefully, you can still operate while you're getting that done. Does that make sense? Okay. I second the motion.
No further lights. Motion is second. Roll call?
This is a motion to deny. Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Denied on a seven-zero vote. Item number 23, The Great River Buffet, 346 North Saddle Creek Road, Class I liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents? Don't let the last one scare you off.
Glad to know. My name is May, owner of Great River Buffet, and we only requesting Class I, which adding beer and wine to our beverage list. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Festerston?
I'm sorry. That's fine. Second, I'll just add a comment. We appreciate the restaurant going in where it is. This is right next to the old Target building. We're all interested in filling, and pleased to see a restaurant take up part of that space. That's why I second the motion.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call?
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Mulligan?
Stoddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Granted seven to zero. Item number 24, Dynas Mart, 2604 South 13th Street, package liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Dieter Money. I'm applying for liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second, roll call?
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Granted seven to zero. Item number 25, Quick Trip, number 589, at 5305 North 103rd Street, package liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 25 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Bob Huck. I'm an attorney at 1200 Omaha Tower and representing Quick Trip Corporation. This is a site that had a Sinclair station on it that was torn down, some would say deservedly so, and a brand-new Quick Trip is being put up there. And this would be a package license, much like all their other locations have in the city. Any questions, I'll try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Mr. Huck, you have a package over at our office, just a reminder.
All right, thanks.
Second. Not on the package, but on this.
Here we go. Roll call?
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Mulligan?
Stoddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Granted seven to zero. Item number 26, Pepper Jack's Grill, 1221 Howard Street, on sale, beer license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 26 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Aaron Dunzing, Pepper Jack's Grill, District Manager here on their behalf.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call?
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number 27, Big Red Kino Bar and Grill, 8100 Cass Street, request permission for an addition of the present Class C liquor license of an enlarged patio area to the southeast corner, 14 feet by 26, 24, 26 by 26.
Public hearing on item number 27 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bill Harvey, 11248 John Galt Boulevard for Big Red Kino. Basically, this is part of our plan that we discussed with the council last month when we were here before you. We're doubling the size of our outdoor area that we currently have. We're going to put a roof over it and add some other, you know, above the floor heat and so forth, so that we'll make a little nicer outdoor area than what we have right now. And we'll be back, I hope, in a couple of months with another addition for this plan to discuss with you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Mark Welsh, President of GASP of Nebraska, the group to alleviate smoking pollution. And I'd like you to consider a condition on this, is that to not allow servers into that area. Secondhand smoke, which I am assuming this is the purpose for expanding this, is because they want to have more smokers outdoors at this business. Even outdoor secondhand smoke is dangerous for people to breathe. And I would just urge you to put a condition that employees of this business do not have to go into a very dangerous area and breathe secondhand smoke while they're at work. We have a state law, we used to have a city ordinance that protected people from secondhand smoke. And by expanding this area, you're just going to cause problems for employees, where they'll get emphysema, could get lung cancer, other kinds of cancers, et cetera. So, and there's also been an effort in the past years, and will continue, to not allow smoking within a certain number of feet, probably within 25 feet of any entrance to a business. So Big Red Kino and anybody else that's considering something like this should keep that in mind before they spend a lot of money putting in a smoking area right next to their business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey, would you like rebuttal?
I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. We would have this area be in compliance with all state laws and regulations and all the city ordinances.
Thank you. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Welch, I'll just stay where you're at. I respect what you do, and I was a partner in helping you to get some initial things done a few years back. But I have to admit that I am not an intrusive government guy, and at some point, we have to draw the line. The outside stipulation is just something I can't do. I can't do that. Mr. Harvey, if you could come back up to the microphone, would you say that you'd be willing to let just management handle it? If we have some servers that have asthma or whatever, they're not going to be forced to go outside, or they'll be fired or something like that?
Of course.
And so we could just have on the record a gentleman's agreement that the servers who go outside know what they're getting into, and you're not going to force anybody to do something against their will.
Absolutely. I don't even know that it's clear that we would have servers in this area. I, you know, I think, we'd certainly like the opportunity to do that if we feel that that would serve the needs of our business. But we would certainly not put anybody in a position where they were uncomfortable.
Okay, thank you, thank you. A lot of times, we, you may be seated, we operate under a false premise that, you know, ultimate democracy can be attained, and it can't. You can't make everybody happy all the time. There are going to be some gray areas. So I'm going to reject that appeal, and I'll go ahead and move the approval. Hope I get a second.
No further lights. Roll call?
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Mulligan?
Stoddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number 28, Twin Peaks, 17330 West Center Road, request permission for an addition of Sidewalk Cafe.
Public hearing on item number 28 begins now. Are there any proponents?
John Begley, 1013 North 63rd Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Mark Welsh, 5611 Howard Street, President of GASP. Just ditto what I said before. Plus, the difference between the Big Red Kino location, that's a standalone business. There's no business anywhere near that location. I believe this is at a strip mall, and I'd like you, before you approve this, to take, and I've not had a chance to look at this, and I apologize for that, but to take a look at, how far away is the next adjoining businesses' entrance to this proposed area? And how much smoke is going to blow into that business every time that door is opened? How many employees, how many customers will have to walk in and out of another business and go through a lot of smoke? Because if you approve this, they'll allow smoking outdoors there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponent? Public hearing's closed.
Thomas?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Mulligan?
Stoddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number 29 is Silhouettes Lounge, 314 South 16th Street, request permission to appoint Courtney Kellogg, manager of the present Class I liquor license.
Public hearing on item number 29 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Courtney Kellogg, 6957 North 89th Avenue. I just want to urge you to give me the management of the liquor license based on my history of managing liquor licenses in the past with three different locations. And I actually had no violations against any liquor license I've ever held.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Maurice Parker, 300 South 16th Street, Unit 1202. In last year's November 20th, 2009 hearing for the Silhouettes Lounge, there were concerns raised about Courtney Kellogg, specifically, since applicant Courtney Kellogg listed the following, 1999 disorderly conduct. Additionally, application was amended to include the following, 702 noise violation, 809 speeding. Further, whether the applicant can follow and comply with the Liquor Control Act, ID applicant was denied a license in 2004 due to character and reputation. He is the owner of Silhouettes Lounge, and based on the experiences we've had with Silhouettes Lounge, with them doing two-for-one drink specials, with them doing all-you-can-drink between 10 and 11, and the inability to control the areas outside of their bar, we do not think he is qualified to be manager on that liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Mr. Kellogg, would you like rebuttal? Hold on.
Oh, God.
I'm trying to go as slow as I can, folks.
Erica Govan, 300 South 16th Street, Unit 1003. This, I can no longer sleep. Every Friday night, every Saturday night, sometimes Thursday nights, there's eight police cars outside. There's screaming, there's fighting. We have video evidence of it. I don't appreciate walking home from an event at the Orpheum Theater and getting harassed by obviously extremely intoxicated patrons. And security at Silhouettes does nothing about it until the cops are called. It is a danger, and we're trying to rehabilitate downtown. And the rest of downtown, with the College World Series and new businesses coming in, but 16th Street, it's just not happening because of businesses like Silhouettes Lounge.
Thank you. Next opponent?
Scott Shree, 312 South 16th, 1006. When I moved downtown, my wife and I, empty nesters, we came down to enjoy the entertainment and enjoy the hustle and bustle. When people come out of the Orpheum, 1,000 or 2,000 people, you know, sometimes they come out enthusiastic from the performance they've seen, and there's a little noise, and you just accept that in urban living, that's part of urban living. But being awakened in a deep sleep at 2:00 AM because of the loud noise, a person's not moving on to wherever their destination is. But, you know, this doesn't happen all the time, but a number of times, people just staying there, cars coming up, kind of congregating, loud noise, people hollering at the top of their lungs, and usually does not come, dispersment of the crowd doesn't come until police show up. And the noise of an urban setting, I understand. I understand the fire truck, the ambulance that goes down 15th Street, that's part of urban noise. The bus is there, goes down 16th Street, that's part of urban noise. People coming in and out of the People coming in and out of the Orpheum, that's part of urban noise. This is well beyond a normal expectation. This is, I just decide, well, I'll get up at 2:00, I'll read for about a half hour, maybe if I haven't called the police, someone else will, and once everybody's dispersed, I'll go back to bed. You know, I don't think that's a normal expectation one should have. That's been my alternative, is on those Fridays or Saturdays when people congregate and there's just all this noise and cars are coming up, and the party kind of continues from what was ever happening in the lounge. I don't have any problem with what happens in the lounge. I haven't had any difficulty whatsoever, it's just the exit and people moving on and the party kind of continuing in the street until police vehicles show up. And so, I would just invite you to deny this license because there doesn't seem to be any really exit strategy, if you will, for those who go to the Silhouettes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent?
This is on the manager app only. The next item is the application for renewal of their liquor license. So, if you want to talk about the manager app, come on up, but I think most of you are here to talk about something else.
Ben Swan, 312 South 16th Street, Number 506. It's my understanding that to be a manager, you need to be a Nebraska resident, and I'd just like to note that it's my understanding that Courtney Kellogg lists his address on Facebook as Los Angeles, California, and maintains an area code of 340 for his telephone number. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponent? If not, public hearing correction. Mr. Kellogg, would you like rebuttal?
Again, I urge you to grant me the license because of my history. I've been granted a liquor license in Nebraska three times. So, and that's a validation that I can manage a liquor license. I am a resident of Nebraska, I'm registered to vote here, I have a driver's license in Nebraska, I have a car registered in Nebraska, and I have leases, that's why I do live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Just so everyone knows, this is on the manager app. Items 30 and 31, which is the next item, will be where you get up on your proponent and opponent of the license itself, on whether to issue the long form. And just while I'm talking about that, Mr. Clerk, would you, there have been some people that have commented on whether this is to renew the license. Items 30 and 31 will just be on whether we require the licensee to file a new long-form application, right?
Bust around City Clerk, that is correct.
Mr. Kellogg, would you come back up? Would you explain the whole Facebook and phone number inconsistency with what?
Sure, the Facebook, that information was put on Facebook approximately two years ago, before I opened up Silhouettes Lounge. I never took it off, so that information is incorrect. Again, I am a resident, so, and applying for a liquor license past year and a half basically proved that, I am.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, did you at my request look into his residency?
Bust around City Clerk, he did submit that his voter registration, so he is a registered voter in the city of Omaha.
And you checked out his address? That he lists a Nebraska address?
Yes.
Okay. So, just so everyone knows, my view of this is really on how we handle items 30 and 31 as to Mr. Kellogg himself, as far as a manager application. Mr. Mungart, in your experience, do you see any basis that we were to deny that? I don't see it, but do you?
That's ultimately your decision. A manager has to have all of the same qualifications as an owner, which would include the ability to run the place in accordance with the law. So any of the comments about how the place has been run during his supervision of the business certainly can be considered on whether he should or shouldn't be the manager.
Okay. As to the license long-form process itself, our ruling on one or our recommendation on one has no bearing on the other?
True. You can approve him as the manager and still question whether the license should continue on or vice versa.
Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Mungart.
I'm Mungart, Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you. Somebody was going to ask you, so it might as well be me. Thank you. No further lights? Motion approved. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It is adopted on a six-one vote. Now we'll take items 30 and 31 for one public hearing. 30 is a protest filed by three or more residents in accordance with the Nebraska Liquor Control Act opposing the automatic renewal of the Class I liquor license of Silhouettes Lounge at 314 South 16th Street for the 2011-2012 licensing year. We have a legal opinion from Thomas Mungart, Deputy City Attorney. We have documents submitted in opposition. 31 is resolution that the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission is hereby requested to require Silhouettes Lounge, 314 South 16th Street, to submit a long-form renewal application for the 2011-2012 licensing year.
Public hearing, Mr. Clerk says on item 30, motion to receive and place on file after the hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Public hearing on items 30 and 31 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Courtney Kellogg, any?
Actually, this is reversed. Those in favor will be in favor of requiring a long form. So you're actually an opponent, so those who oppose his license and want him to file a long form are the proponents in this case. Yeah. And it would be a good idea if anybody who wants to testify would come down, at least sit in the front row so they, we can move this along.
My name is Ray Morrison, I live at 312 South 16th Street. A little background, when we first learned of Signatures, as Silhouettes was originally called, in September 2009, we welcomed it. It was to be a high-end bar and grill in our building, in a space that had been vacant for some five-plus years, serving lunch and dinner. And to address the parking problem, which I'm sure most of you realize that on 16th and Harney area, there was a parking problem, they were going to have valet parking. Based on this information, not only do we not oppose the liquor license, but we were in favor of it. Unfortunately, what we got was, shall we say, 180 away from what we've been talked about. What we got was a rapper bar that is fraught with problems for us. In the past year and a half, or in the past year, we've had three law committee meetings, of which three members of this council seat, and hearings on Silhouettes. And at the last one, on 9/14, Silhouettes was placed on probation. Since they've been placed on probation, there have been five tabling reports issued by OPD. And we have Captain?
Speak to us, sir. Just speak to us.
The captain is here that can answer any questions you might have, I'm sure, on the police reports and the tabling reports. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Maurice Parker, 300 South 16th Street, Unit 1202. As Ray just mentioned, you know, we originally had thought we were going to get someplace that served lunch and dinner, and maybe was open for drinks afterwards. What we got was something very different, and it's important to realize is that's how we started out with Silhouettes Lounge. You know, we might have actually been at this meeting that I quoted earlier, you know, where there were, you know, concerns voiced about Courtney Kellogg due to his previous, you know, denied application due to character and reputation. That's actually turned out to be extremely prescient, frankly. We've had nothing but problems to last year. It's been a very, very long year. As Ray just mentioned, we've had multiple violations throughout the year, and he only mentioned the last five. You know, these things, they're something that's been a common reoccurring theme. And we've come before the law committee many, many, many times to try to get these issues resolved. You know, and I think a lot of this all speaks to wanting to take responsibility for your bar, wanting to take responsibility for the actions that happen outside your bar and trying to control that. You know, when we first raised these concerns in that forum, the initial response from Mr. Kellogg was denial. Things weren't happening outside. There's nothing going on out there. Eventually, you know, as we began to prove that and starting to learn more about the entire process, the people in the community started documenting it, it then turned to, this is a problem from the Securities Building, an OH8 housing facility there in the neighborhood, or it's Oasis Bar and Grill, or Hookah Bar, who's causing these problems. That's who's being rowdy and who's causing the noise. Most recently, as you can see, you know, Mr. Kellogg gave an energy last night, you know, to WOWT, and here's his statement. "This is downtown living, it's not the suburbs. If you want to live quietly, I think the suburbs is the place to live." And that speaks quite a bit, I think, to me on many different levels, as to some of the problems we have with Mr. Kellogg. To him, we should just have to deal with the problem. He's not willing to cope with the problem, he's not doing anything wrong. The violence that we're having on 16th Street, the fights, the heavy police presence, the gunshots, they're not his issue. And if we don't like it, we really should be living someplace else. We don't think that's appropriate as the taxpayers who are paying the property taxes on that street, and certainly not as people who really want to see 16th Street prosper. We think that that's definitely the wrong message to send, and we don't think that that's somebody who is owning and operating a bar in our neighborhood should have that So we would like you to today, you know, make sure that they do have to file the long form, and please keep an eye towards when that comes back around so that we can take this from the beginning as we should have in the first place, knowing that there was a, there's a problem with character, knowing that we're not getting a restaurant in the neighborhood, give us the opportunity to make sure that this alcohol license ultimately gets denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Ben Swan, 312 South 16th Street, Number 506. I agree with much of what Maurice and Ray have shared with you this afternoon, and I'd just like to add some of my personal experiences. I've come home on a Friday evening and had, I don't know if it's pepper spray that was sprayed outside, and, you know, my friends, my guests that were coming in, their eyes are tearing up in the lobby of the Regis where I live, and I had friends over. I've been kept up no less than two or three nights a week. I live on the fifth floor, so it's up substantially, and the normal city noises do not keep me up. I've had to get extra garage door keys to let people in through, to let friends that are coming in, come in through the back entrance, because, you know, especially females, I think, feel that it's dangerous, based on a history of, you know, fights, assaults, battery happening on 16th Street that wasn't happening before Silhouettes Bar. I'm a business owner downtown, I employ people downtown. 16th Street is one of the places where I'd like to open a business. And I'm not the only, you know, young entrepreneur that wants to do that type of thing, but it's absolutely out of the question with Silhouettes as a neighbor. And that's just my personal perspective as a resident and somebody who's just absolutely in love with downtown Omaha, that I hope that we can do something with 16th Street that's positive for everyone in the community, and, you know, a club that was like that, that was originally presented would be a great opportunity for us, but it's just not in any way what we have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Kathy Barrett, I live at 300 South 16th Street, Unit 507. I got you. After the last law committee hearing, Councilman Franklin asked us, suggested to us, to start videotaping disturbances downtown. I was assaulted and robbed while I was filming disturbances downtown, and there were two fights going on in front of the nightclub. The first police car had arrived, the Signal 88 guard was in the middle of the mayhem at the alley entrance by the Regis Building. Police were busy swarming and tackling fighters to the ground when I got assaulted and robbed. I heard glass bottles being shattered on the sidewalk. People were moving in all directions, there was lots of screaming, there were incredible noise levels out there that night. The crowd was harassing me for filming. A guy in a dark hoodie came from the crowd and walked near me as though he were to pass by, but he stopped and he struck my arms, and my camera hit the ground. He picked up the camera and ran up the alley. I started screaming for the police. I was screaming that I'd been assaulted, but the police couldn't hear me, they were so busy that they had to move down the alley by Oasis to the parking lot in the alley area to take care of more fights at the time. I jumped into the SUV of the Signal 88 guard because I didn't think it was safe to even try to get back to the entrance. And I asked him, there was a police officer on the corner, I said, "My cellphone is dead. Can you go and bring a police officer to me?" And he refused. He said he wouldn't even get out of his SUV because there were too many people out there that night. This was one of the worst disturbances that I've seen in Silhouettes until February 6th. It's not as if we're talking about that noisy bar down on the corner there. They're right beneath our windows, they're on all sides of our building, they're in the back parking lot, in a private parking area, and they're surrounding Regis as well. Now, to read Silhouettes' security reports, you might think that this is nothing more than a couple of catfights between a couple of women going on. You think that OPD is the auxiliary security branch of Silhouettes, that Silhouettes warmly invites OPD to come over, roll up their sleeves, throw a dish towel over their shoulder, and pitch in wherever they can lend a hand to usher the crowd along. If you would, I would like to show a video, if you would permit that.
We have that. He's got it.
This is about violence. It's about major disruptions in society on this street. Silhouettes patrons punching, kicking, battering each other in the streets, and growling, shouting, male arguments before a drug bust at 16th and Farnham. Male squaring up against each other to fight in the middle of 16th Street, bringing traffic to a stop. It's police moving down the alleys and into the parking lots to break up more fights, and calling lots of backup to do it. Car windows smashed out, glass bottles shattering on the street, every, but, every single bit of what I've just said is true. This violence is escalating, it's clearly becoming more frequent and involving more people now. When people start fighting while three, two or 300 excited patrons are also out at the streets, it almost reaches riot levels. The police I've talked to tell me they're sick and tired of responding to these disturbances again and again, and we're pretty sick about it, too. We don't make allegations that we can't back up with proof, and we don't exaggerate, we don't need to. We have the police reports, and we have a library of videos to support approximately 12 municipal code violations, and occasionally a felony. You are welcome to the raw footage at any time. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Scott Sherry, 312 South 16th Street, number 1006. As I stated earlier, the noise level is just not common for an urban area. Uh, I lived in Chicago for 25 years, lived a block from an L-stop, understand what urban noise is, uh, have, I think, relatively normal expectations. Uh, the noise level, uh, between, um, around 2:00, when, uh, the bar closes down, silhouette closes down, is, is extreme and well beyond, um, acceptable levels, and therefore I'd invite you to pass that which is before us.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Roger Holdhouse, my law office address is 319 South 17th Street. Previously, it was on the street level at 16, uh, 304 South 16th Street. Uh, but my residence is now a grandstand view of 16th Street, on the ninth floor of the Orpheum Towers. Um, by the way, I also should mention that I'm Chair of the 16th Street Committee for Downtown Omaha, Inc. I cannot tell you firsthand what goes on inside the silhouette, but I can tell you, I can see the results of the police cars, as you just saw here, uh, it's a very reoccurring The police cars, uh, on, on 16th Street, in, in front of the Silhouettes, and we also, by the way, uh, from my apartment, I can see the back parking lot behind the Oasis, where, uh, sound-wise, I can, I don't hear anything, except the sirens. When I hear the sirens, I look out the window, and as I said, I have a grandstand view. Any questions, I'd be glad to try to illuminate further.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
I'm Timothy Kenny, I'm a resident. I, uh, ask the council to forgive my appearance, um, I've just had training in Spokane, and I'm on my way here. However, I speak as a resident strictly of 300 South 16th Street, number 1303. The noise levels, um, are not compatible, or what you would expect, uh, on a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday night, as opposed to fire trucks, which are required and apparent and correct of a downtown urban environment. Hearing assaults, hearing fights, constantly hearing yelling and screaming, things that don't pass by. I don't mind a truck, I don't mind a car, I don't mind honking or fire trucks as well, and I know the rest of the residents understand that as well. However, this, this loud noise that lasts for time in upwards of 45 minutes, or until the cop cars are called, and then the lights are flashing, and even up on the 13th floor, it's still a big disturbance. I've had multiple Thursday nights where I have to get up at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and I've been woken up at 2:00 or 1:30, and not able to get back to sleep until that. And to me, that provides, obviously, alarm, as well as the rest of the residents here, and I'd like to echo that, and just let you know my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Good afternoon, my name's Katie Benson, I live in 300 South 16th Street, I'm a condo board member, along with Maurice. I also work in the courthouse, so I'm around 16th Street, all day and all night. I won't echo everything that everybody's said, but I am in agreeance with it. I'm a young professional, as many people are in my building, along with the Regis. I think we are what young people should be in downtown Omaha, I think we are what you should want in the neighborhood of downtown Omaha. We don't expect there not to be bars or noise downtown, I've always lived in a downtown area, but as you can see, that this isn't the average bar. I wouldn't mind being woken up on occasion, but this is every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, I have to wear earplugs, if I forget to put them in, I am woken up on each of those nights. This isn't a once a month, or maybe twice a month, that one person's out of control, this is every week. And I'll just give you one example, about a month ago, I took my mother, my grandmother, to the Orpheum, they came up to my house, to my condo, to use the bathroom, as we came out, there was people screaming in the alley, right next to Silhouettes, and two people urinating on their way to the car. It's an embarrassment for people who live there, it's an embarrassment for my neighbors, and it should be an embarrassment for you, as you hear what's going on, and on 16th Street, when it's trying to be rebuilt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Erica Govan, 300 South 16th Street, 1003. Sorry, you know, I spoke earlier, but all we're asking is, we want to feel safe. As of now, I don't think anyone in the building feels safe with this business right downstairs, and we just want to be able to sleep. You know, it's not like we are asking for complete silence. We understand city noise, but this is far beyond that.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Arnold Breslow, 1240 South 10th. As I stated earlier, um, I am president of our Neighborhood Association, which includes this, it's the Old Market South Neighborhood Association. We have, uh, been asked, have looked at as a group, and have thrown our support behind these people. Uh, we've done an awful lot to try to improve the image of not only downtown, but the near south and the near north, and, uh, we fought this battle before, with liquor establishments, and when they get like this, they don't get better, they get worse. And what you're going to get is us coming back to you and back to you, and every time we do it, gets churned up in the news. When it gets churned up in the news, it hurts what we're trying to do for downtown. And I really think the council needs to look at it, and do what has to be done, to try to resolve the problem, so that 16th Street can improve, as well as other areas of downtown. It is very, very important that you give your real concern and attention to it, because a lot of money is being spent by all of us, and all of you in our city. So please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Mark Welsh, I live at 5611 Howard Street. I'm just curious about the problem downtown here that I've been hearing tonight, and I hope you are, too, and, and the question that I have is, why are the police not inside that bar every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, watching to make sure that the bartenders, and the waiters and waitresses are not serving people who are drunk? It's against the law to serve people who are already intoxicated, if there were officers undercover in those places, watching for that, and when one of those employees sells alcohol or serves alcohol to somebody who is already drunk, they arrest and haul away the person who served them. If they would do that once, or twice, I think this business would get the message, those employees certainly would get the message, when they're cooling their heels down at the city jail, and this problem might be at least toned down quite a bit, if people are not being over-served, which it sounds like, and from looking at the video, you see people stumbling around and, and fighting. People who are sober don't usually fight like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent?
Cassie Gryson, Project Extra Mile, 11606. I, I am a resident of Farnham 1600, uh, but I'm here representing Project Extra Mile in support of the residents, and ask that you not grant the auto renewal of Silhouettes liquor license. These residents' concerns are documented with tavern reports, which, tavern reports, which is how you build a case against a, an establishment that's out of control. On September 19th, 2010, they were cited for fights. On September 24th, 2010, license not posted. October 2nd, 2010, female assaulted. February 6th, 2011, mace used by security. March 4th, 2011, assault. These are documented incidents by Omaha Police Department, and our resources being used, our taxpayers, tax dollars being used. Project Extra Mile has consistently, uh, come before the council in support of residents who are trying to address, um, and protect their neighborhoods against violence that often are associated with problem alcohol outlets. Today, you are facing an entirely new group of residents, and we ask that you support them.
Thank you. Next proponent?
My name is Ray Morrison, again, and I, um, want to be sure that one of our residents, Adam Ord, asked that I verify that you received his email, uh, in, uh, support of this, and I just wanted to be sure I had copies, in case you did not.
You could leave those with the clerk, if you wish.
Okay.
Thank you. Seeing none? Are there any opponents?
Courtney Kellogg, 6957 North 89th Avenue. I'd just like to mention, uh, there are, there's validation when people do leave clubs, and want to linger out, and don't want to leave and go home. Uh, that's probably just about every club in Omaha. I did apply, when I first applied for liquor license, I did apply for a club and restaurant, it wasn't an upscale dinner and lunch, um, place. Uh, there are issues after the club is, uh, when the club lets out, uh, things happen. Unfortunately, um, we, we, if you see the video, our security guard was right there after that guy punched the other guy. The other incident where people get, there were actually a party bus that people were actually getting back on, and they were allowed, they were actually guiding them to get back on the bus. We, the tavern reports are, uh, not, the tavern reports are, that he, she just mentioned only one, I think, is against the liquor violation, which is, we didn't have our liquor, um, posted, uh, posted, and that's because it was taken out to get, um, copied. But we did bring it back on location that night, and the police did see the actual, uh, the liquor license. Um, all the people are, uh, before me have not come to me at any time, sat down with me, and talked to me before they became, before they came to the City Council to talk about any of these issues. I didn't know until they came before the City Council, tell, tell me about these issues. So I was unaware. Uh, we did beef up our security, our security do send in, uh, reports every single night that the club is open, so we do all, but, and you, you guys have that, we have residents that sign, uh, a petition for Silhouettes that live one mile radius in that area. I think you, you also have that with you, if you don't, we'll give you a copy. It's about 44 signatures, uh, it's, uh, residents across the street, the Orpheum Building, Brandeis Building, and other, uh, buildings around the, around that area, all in proximity of Silhouettes Lounge. The complaints mostly are coming from the residents that are above and next door, the 1600 Building. And again, we do, people do stand outside, don't want to leave at night, and it, and the noise that happens, we don't, we're not allowed to actually disperse the crowd. The residents actually come in, call the police before the people even let out of the building, so they don't give security enough time to ask the crowd to leave. So, um, I just ask that, you know, I have a liquor license, my reputation, that I, that he claims that I have, is, I don't have a, a bad reputation. It's never, I never have, I don't have any, um, anything against me in my whole entire life, that would say I have a bad reputation, and, or my character. So, I just ask that you, you know, take a look at the fact that I've been a businessman in, in Omaha for quite a long time, I've owned several businesses, I've done very well, uh, no issues ever against anything, you know, any violations against any liquor license I've ever had, or business. I've held a business in Old Market for 12 years on, I mean, I'm sorry, for five years on, uh, 12th and Howard, called a meeting place Coffee House, never had any issues. And it was a good customer base, unfortunately, Silhouettes is actually managed very properly, it's one of the, the safest place to come into. Unfortunately, when you go outside the doors, uh, people do tend to want to linger and hang around. We have beefed up security for those purposes. Can we always control it? Absolutely not. We tried, and we, we do every single night to control it. And, again, inside the place, if, if these people ever come in and just, you know, visit Silhouettes Lounge, they may see that it's not, it is a good place, it is a nice environment, and it is an upscale place. Unfortunately, we just have those, uh, different few people that causes issues. So I, I ask that you, uh, just take a look at that, and, um, grant me the, uh, the renewal of the license.
Thank you. Next opponent?
Name is Richard Smith, 210 South 16th Street, number 304. Uh, you'll have to forgive me, I didn't really know about this, coming up on today's agenda until 12 noon. Um, and, uh, the first thing I did was go ahead, and I, I caught a glimpse of this, this, today, on the, the website of Channel 6 and Channel 7. And as I'm reading the story, I read the comments, and what's, it was upsetting to me, the comments I read concerning this issue here. Uh, first, let me tell you that, um, I've known Courtney for a long time. My, myself, until recently, was a business owner in, uh, in the same building I live in. So I've owned a business for five, six years, until recently, and, uh, been downtown longer in that same building, so I'm only a block away from this, and so I frequented from the time they opened till, uh, two weeks ago. And, um, unfortunately, I've never leaving that place, never experienced or seen any kind of violence like I saw in that video there. You know, that's, that's extremely troubling, and, uh, what the lady, uh, had mentioned earlier about her being assaulted, you know, I wouldn't want to go ahead and, you know, be around or involved or anything like that, but I, but I, what I do believe is this, is that, what I've heard, uh, and I would, I've advised you to go ahead and look at the comments, uh, after the article on both the websites, because it, it's, it's really disturbing and upsetting, because it goes ahead and it turns into a, you know, us against them, black against white, and that's not, you know, and that's not right. You know, when we go ahead, I think that, of all the testimony I've heard, I've never heard one person say, "I went and talked to him about this." You know, "Yeah, I'm in front of a committee, and all this and that, but I didn't talk to him." You know, you live here on top, a business is in, in the Old Market or in downtown, you'd want to be happy that a business is there. What can we go ahead and do? The association person is here, did he go ahead and ask him, greet him when he came here? Did he go ahead and say, "Hey, what can we go ahead and do to help you?" You've got problems. Obviously, there's been multiple times that they've had police out there, and instead of going ahead and secretly filming from the top, about incidents that happened, and reporting it, going ahead and, and, you know, making reports, go ahead and try to work together, to go ahead and solve these problems. I know for a fact that when I, when he first opened, he had one person as security, one person. If, if, if you go to Silhouettes now, it's like you're trying to get in to see the president. Almost offensive, almost, really. They patch you down, they do this, so, you know, uh, you know, he has taken steps, I, me personally, from the time he's opened to now to do that. Obviously, outside's a whole different story. But I think instead of going ahead and driving somebody down to the ground, and But I think instead of going ahead and driving somebody down to the ground and having nothing but things to say that, if you've never been in there, you've never talked to him, you don't know what goes in, those incidents that we see outside, there's maybe 40, 50, 60 people, well, he has 300, 400 people in there, or whatever his limit is. So you've got that many people getting the heck out of there. And no matter where you go, bar, restaurant, you're going to have people that are misfits, that misbehave. So it's not as if this is, this is just, you know, just for him. What I'm seeing is that, you know, there's problems there obviously, but, you know, instead of going ahead and destroying a person and saying, "Hey, don't give him a license at all," which you know would eliminate the business. Instead of going ahead and making statements like rapper bar, still making statements like, you know, when, if Oasis goes ahead and gets a liquor permit, I'm not sure if they refuse from Silhouettes, if they can handle those kinds of people. What are those kinds of people? Those are the things I'm talking about. Instead of, you know, you want to go ahead and go to the point where I'm looking on his Facebook page, and it says he's, he's living in California, he's got this right here. Anybody knows there's a multitude of things on Facebook, Twitter, all those places that aren't true. He goes ahead and documents that he has to go there, but when you go to nitpicking things to go ahead and try, to go ahead and eliminate someone, that's not right. I'm not, like I said, I'm not saying that there's no problem, but I think instead of going ahead and trying to kick somebody out, throw somebody out, because that's what they're doing, that's what they're saying, that's what they want, is try to help this person. He has responsibilities as an owner that he should be able to take care of, but also as neighbors, as residents, and they have complaints and concerns, they need to go ahead and say, "Here's our suggestion, here's some things that we think might help you." The police, the same thing. If they're tired of going ahead and coming back, maybe they've got some kind of program within the police department to say, "Hey, that they can help you with those kinds of things." They're not that far away. I'm just saying that we should be able to go ahead and try to try that. We're trying to go ahead and build businesses in Omaha. They wanted to go ahead and destroy both businesses on the side of 16th Street. So it's like, hey, you know, after 5 o'clock, we should be quiet. We don't want anything there. The woman talked about, you know, somebody talked about, well, hey, you know what, all this stuff didn't happen before, so it's, well, nothing happened because there wasn't nobody there. You can't rob, shoot anybody when there's nobody there to begin with. 5 o'clock, that place is shut down. So I think, I ask you as council members, just to go ahead and ponder this, and say, "Okay, hey, instead of going ahead, what can we do to try to resolve the problem?" I would think, I don't know, I can't speak for Courtney personally, I can't speak, but you know what, obviously, these guys have been just adversaries from the very beginning instead of trying to be together. But what happens in the end is that he loses and they win. He goes and they stay. When they, we could have went ahead and had this, we'd have a happy, happy hour with So, you know, like I said, I think it's, we need to try to go ahead and work together to resolve this versus going ahead and eliminating this altogether. Because, and I bet you none of these people have been in there before, if not, if they had, I'm sure there's some video they got that they've seen, but they've never been in there, so they have no idea what goes on in there. And that place is a very, very nice place to go and be, the decor is nice, the people are nice, everything. It's the jerks that go ahead and get out there, that go and destroy for everybody else. So it's not indicative of what that club is like. But all they see is from their windows. They don't want to go ahead and talk to him whether before or after, they don't want to do any of those kinds of things. And they talk about, well, you know what, when it goes ahead and gets exposed, well, they're doing the exposing, they've got the film, they don't want to talk to TV, that's where all this stuff comes about. He's not going out and saying that. So you know, what's going to happen when you do that? So he's not exposing anything, they're exposing everything. And I truly will want to go ahead and remind them, ask them, let them think about, when they make statements like those things, that they ponder what they're saying, so somebody like me doesn't get so upset about those comments, can be misconstrued, they know why they are. And I would imagine that, you know, it's just, just look at the statements on there. Some of them are addressed to you, Councilman Gray. It's ridiculous. It is totally ridiculous. And I would bet most of those people that are making all these comments about this story, don't even live down here, don't even have any idea what's going on. So I think that, you know, if I can say anything is that, is to be fair, and work together to try to go ahead and resolve this, because it's an establishment that I think that needs to be there, it's a well-run establishment inside, because those problems don't happen inside. I've never, I've never seen anybody, nothing like that. And like I said, you know, I've told him myself, that, hey, you know what, these people hanging outside and doing this kind of stuff and everything else, you know, you got to, I don't want to come to this place. You know, if that's, the stuff is going to be happening, we need to try to control that. How would they know that he hasn't been trying to do that unless they ask him? They don't know what he's been doing. They try to go and combat all those things, because he never asked nobody. How would you know? You don't want to talk to him in person, pick up the phone, email, you guys are looking at emails all the time and websites, do that. But don't all of a sudden go ahead and wait till this day to say, "Okay, now we want to get rid of him," and haven't said a darn word or tried to help him out at all to avoid this. That's not right, that's not fair, that's not very neighborly. He was probably in there before, some of these people were even in that apartment place. So think about those kinds of things. Don't get mad or upset about me pointing them out. Because right is right. All I'm doing is saying, just go ahead and ponder it. Let's not go ahead and try to destroy somebody instead of trying to help them. That's what it's all about. You know, the owner association up here talked about thriving businesses in downtown, well, this is what he wants to do, he wants to open up a business down there. He wants to try to do that, or is it that, you know what, only the certain kind that he wants to be in there? Like I said, has he extended any kind of help, greeting, anything to him?
Richard, we're becoming a little repetitive here.
Okay, that's all. I'm sorry. Thanks.
Thank you. Next opponent?
Hi, about buying and planning, I actually work at Silhouettes Lounge, and I just wanted to talk about a couple people, residents, said that they haven't been any assaults or any violence downtown of 16th Street before Silhouettes Lounge. I lived there back in 2005, and I mean, standing on the corner, the bus stops, the library, that whole area, I mean, it's not, they're saying that it's not safe because of Silhouettes Lounge. Well, downtown really wasn't that safe before Silhouettes Lounge got there. So I don't think that Silhouettes Lounge being there, you know, has anything to do with that. Also, I went around and got the 43 signatures from different, from local residents or whatever, and I went to five different residential complexes, including, I got two signatures from residents right above us. And I looked at the signatures that people are against us that have, and they only have from basically two buildings. And out of all the signatures that I got, I have 43 signatures, and out of 43 of them I have 13 white signatures. And from the signatures that I've seen from what they have, they didn't go and talk to any of the lower-income residential areas, which is basically the majority of black residents. So I don't know if the big question is, are they afraid of seeing 100, 150 black people all at one time? I'm not sure. But I know for a fact that they didn't go and talk to no black residents, which are their neighbors, their neighbors and our neighbors as well. So, I mean, that's basically the thing that I want to point out. And also too, we have beefed up security, you know? All bars have fights and, you know, some types of violence. And if that wasn't the case, then nobody would have security. We wouldn't need security. But it does happen, like I said, we are making a lot of stride to prevent that, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent?
My name is Toby Gornes, 5236 Laurel Avenue. I am the security coordinator at the Silhouettes Lounge. I'm here today just to talk a little bit about some of the things we do in order to try to make sure the area is safe for the residents at 16th Street and also the patrons within the Silhouettes Lounge. I noticed there was a log that was made, a disturbance data log, by some of the residents or some of the parties that are protesting Silhouettes Lounge. And I also do a silhouette field observation report each week regarding any incidents affiliated with the Silhouettes Lounge. And I noticed there's a lot of discrepancy between what the disturbance log has compared to what I have in my field observation report. And just to kind of give you some examples of some of the things that have been notated, on 10-1, 2010, there was a female on Front Street resident was assaulted. During that time, a person said they were robbed and camera was taken. Well, I was outside during that time, and that was after hours if anything had occurred. There was no suspects, there was police presence there, there were two individuals out there having a verbal disagreement, but that was basically dealt with by myself and law enforcement officers that were out there. But during that entire time, there was no one that come up and said they had just been assaulted by anyone. So I feel that was a false report. And there's no suspects. And if you notice, in my reports that you do have, or the council do have, I keep this log each day that we're open, and it started in September 2010, and it was per request of the council. And some of the documents or the logs that have been submitted is not on a weekly basis. On 11-19-2010, it was noted that there was a large crowd outside and police presence. That was on a Friday night, it was a very quiet night. We didn't have any incident, there was no police presence. If there is police presence outside, that means someone had called police. If I felt there was a problem, then I would call 911 myself in order to get additional support. But if the police are out there, they're making their own area check, along with, you have a security company that's there. And if they see anything, they would make a call also. We also have another report on 12-3-10, which is a Friday, large crowd, large law enforcement present. Once again, Friday night's a slow night for the silhouette, and there's no need for a large crowd, or large law enforcement present. And let me note that a lot of these police calls are coming from unknown parties. They're not coming from me, they're coming from someone else that's anonymous, bringing police presence out there. I would go out there and I see a police vehicle, and I'd go out and ask them, "Is there a problem? Is there something we need to know about?" And they would indicate, "Well, we just received a call, there's assaults going on out in front of Silhouettes, 10 people involved." No, that's a false report. I've been standing out here, I've had visual, there's nothing going on. On 12-17-10, which is another Friday night, loud music, large crowd, that's a false report. On 12-18-2010, it said that, in the disturbance log, said someone was arrested at the Silhouettes Lounge. That's incorrect. No one was arrested at the Silhouettes Lounge. If there was arrest, there was someone in the alley, or it was after hours regarding some other issue. On 12-24-2010, it was reported that it was a large crowd, police presence. No, it was not. On 12-31-2010, we had emergency vehicles that were outside the Silhouettes Lounge due to someone pulling the fire alarm within the Regis Building. At that time, we went through the evacuation procedures to make sure the fire alarm wasn't coming from silhouette and tried to get people out, but people, a lot of people left on their own. So we did have a large crowd that started leaving due to that fact, but the alarm seemed to come from the Regis area. But there were multiple police cars, there were fire trucks basically there as protocol. On 1-2-2010, same thing, disturbance in the street, was noted in disturbance log, and that was untrue. And these are just, you know, and I can keep going on, and like I said, you know, we're getting a lot of false calls regarding issues with the Silhouettes Lounge. You know, when I talk to, you know, a security company that basically handles that district, and they indicate that after hours, we have people running around through the parking garages that aren't affiliated with the silhouette, people that actually live in the Regis apartments, running around through the parking garages, trying to get attention, and then they indicate that we're trying to give the Silhouettes Lounge a black eye, you know, basically by running around and doing these different things, making it look like it's one of our patrons. And this is after hours, we're not even there anymore. So basically, you know, what I'm trying to say is, we've done a lot to increase our security within the Silhouettes Lounge, and we try to make sure that people are safe. You know, we usually start security at 9 o'clock, and out front of the Regis and the front of 1600 Building, there are a lot of transits, homeless people that are harassing people, and we also move those people, tell them to move along, and just try to find a different place to park themselves. But, you know, basically, we try to help out as much as possible, and we do collaborate with the local security companies and also law enforcement when necessary. But, you know, if someone is calling and making, you know, phone calls to the police department prior to us even being able to engage certain situations, it's really hard for us to be effective that way. So, like I said, a lot of these incidents that I've mentioned are false from the disturbance log, and this is something that we try to keep track of, you know, each time we're open. We're open five days a week. But please consider some of this information, like I said, you do have the information from the logs that we're keeping regarding any incidents around the Silhouettes Lounge.
Thank you. Next opponent?
I would just like to start by saying that I've been affiliated with Silhouettes Lounge since they've been open in November of 2009. And first off, I'd like to point out the disturbance log that you guys have, the very first one on that sheet says that there was an incident, man arrested on 22nd and Lake with a gun, and he had been, earlier that night, he had been on the dance floor at Silhouettes Lounge. Just to take a look at the, how honest some of those reports might be, again, we didn't open Silhouettes Lounge until November of 2009, and that very first report is, the date on it is September 26 or something like that. So take a look at that. Also, I find it very, very ironic that some of the proponents that have been up earlier, I have actually seen them at Silhouettes Lounge being a patron, which, if they've had a change of feeling, I guess I can understand that, but I just thought that was kind of a point that should be brought out as well. Also too, I have a very active role in maintaining the bar itself as far as the drinks and alcohol go. Every night that we're open, Mr. Kellogg has informed me, whether he's there or not, that we do last call between 1:25 and 1:30, even since the new Nebraska law has went into effect that we can technically serve alcohol till 2 o'clock. Every night that we are open, we do last call, as I mentioned, between 1:25 and 1:30. We give our patrons five to 10 minutes to finish their drinks before they have to, before security starts picking them up. So every night, regardless of what night it is, regardless of if it's 1:25 that we do last call, or if it's 1:30 that we do last call, all the drinks are picked up by 1:45. Music is turned off, the lights are turned off, a lot of times it's even done at 1:40. Because of the situation of where we're at, we understand that there are these residences above us and to the side, Courtney has done everything that he can to expedite people leaving. We give, we give our patrons extra time to leave, we don't wait until 2 o'clock when technically we could. As I'm sure most bars do in Omaha, they still serve until 2. But we, as I mentioned, every night are very proactive and do last call between 1:25 and 1:30. It's really so early that many times, myself being behind the bar, I get a lot of complaints about, "Why is it last call already? It's only 1:25, we still have 35 minutes." Again, they have learned to come to appreciate that and realize why we do that, and we do that so that everyone can leave in a fashionable manner and so that we can get people out sooner, so we're not disturbing people at... sooner, so we're not disturbing people at 2:30, 2:35 in the morning. So I just wanted to bring those points out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next opponent?
Hi, Tracy Hicks, registered Nebraska voter. I just want to establish myself as personal assistant to Courtney Kellogg for this business, Silhouettes, and his other businesses. And I personally worked with each and every individual that has spoken here as a opponent for this particular legislature. And if the council would consider that each and every one of these people that have spoken here today that I've worked with are always in compliance. And it is my job usually to make sure that compliance is met in every aspect, from having the liquor license on site, to the paperwork that needs to be done to keep the liquor license in active status. So if the council would consider that, I'd appreciate it, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Next opponent? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mrs. Stothard?
Thank you. The officer from OPD in the back, are you, are you here prepared to speak? Can you come forward?
Captain. Captain Kathy Gonzalez. I'm the Southeast precinct captain.
Thank you very much. So are you prepared to, to give us your point of view and the history that you have?
Sure, absolutely. And Lieutenant Dave Sedleczek, he's the midnight lieutenant that works the area, so he's here with me as well.
Thank you.
He's actually been on several of the calls that have been mentioned. As you know, we came before the council in September to talk about some of the issues that have been going on. We have met personally with the residents. Lieutenant Sedleczek and I have both met with them in an effort to make sure that we hear their concerns and their complaints. And I've also spoken with both Courtney and with Toby Goines in regards to their side of the story as well. Just so you know, the area, at night, obviously, there's issues with parking that are down on 16th Street. It's, there's limited parking. We were able to put up signage because we were getting several complaints of parking disturbances and, and issues with that. Narrow streets, the area zone commercial right there with the bar, so obviously, there's issue with the loud noises. We met with the residents and told them if they do have problems with the loud noises, to call us. We can go down with the decibel reader. We work with Marty Cowboy in the city prosecutor's office. It's a little bit different because of the zoning, so some of those may not be arrestable offenses based on what the area is like down there. We do have cars that are 10-7 in the area just based on the complaints and what's going on. Lieutenant Sedleczek can talk a little bit more about that, but those are specific to Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. So as we hear both sides of the stories with how the disturbances are somehow met, some of those are officers that are actually on scene, that are just basically assigned to that area to deal with the crowd disturbances and the actual blocking of 16th Street. There have been instances where 16th Street, because of the patrons coming out, have went through, and the traffic was not an impasse. So the police cars have had to actually block off 16th Street to ensure the people's safety and to try to get the traffic moving around so that people could flow and get out of the downtown area. There have been five tavern reports since the September incidents, and I think you guys got a copy of those. We sent those to the clerk's office. The first one started September 19th with the disturbance, and then the last one was, I believe, the beginning, or them, sorry, the beginning of this month. It would have been the 4th of March. In regards to some of the fight disturbances, we too had told the residents, if there were issues that we weren't able to see, to please videotape those. There was an incident that was reported of the robbery. We were not able to make an arrest on that. Lieutenant Sedleczek was on scene with that, and he may be able to discuss those more. Do you have questions for me at this point? Otherwise, I'm going to let Lieutenant Sedleczek.
Go ahead. Thanks.
I'm sorry. It's, it's an assignment that they're out of service, and so specifically, that's their area. They're not able to answer any other radio calls at that time. I apologize.
Okay. Yes, like we've said, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, because of all the complaints, we went ahead and had two officers assigned to the area at about 1:30, anticipating crowd or no crowd. So some of those incidents that Toby mentioned, maybe the police weren't called by 911. We were already there, and then they asked for additional backup. On the calls I've been where there are large crowds, it does take a lot of police presence. At times, I've had six, as many as 12 officers there. And at that point, it's not really making arrests because there's so many in the crowd. We just have to get people dispersed. I mean, we'll make an arrest if we have to or if we can, but first, it's the safety of all individuals. We, our policy now is just to shut down 16th Street to stop vehicles from coming and going, and then just to get the crowd out of there.
So Captain Gonzalez, you're, you were saying, and you said before, that you have worked with the neighbors. You've given the neighbors basically instructions on what to do if they, they hear disturbances. Did you say you also told them about videotaping?
Yeah. They, we had mentioned that at one of the other prior law committee meetings.
Okay.
So that way, some of the instances that they would come in to show that there was proof, the bar's well aware of what was going on with that as well. So it's not as if there was any type of issue that they weren't aware of that. So I mean, they've been aware of that, too.
And you've talked to Mr. Kellogg about it also?
And Mr. Goines, correct.
Okay.
We, just so you know, too, I mean, we have never had a sit-down with everybody that's involved in the situation. That was not something that, that the residents wanted to do at that time, because they wanted to build their case, basically, and bring it to you guys.
And with the number of officers that you said, sometimes six to 12 officers there, I'm sure that you're spending a lot of resources in that general area, trying to control the crowd, respond to the disturbances, respond to the police calls, et cetera. Would that be correct?
That is correct. Now, I, just, and so just to clarify that, so if we have two officers that are originally assigned there, if they see that something happens, or if we get a phone call from the bar saying, "Hey, listen, there appears to be something that's brewing. We need more officers," we obviously always call in for the safety of everybody that's involved. So that is accurate.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yep.
The woman that did the video, could you come forward? I just have a quick question for you. And you have to repeat your name?
Kathy Barrett.
All right. Thank you. Where, did you take those videos?
Yes, I did.
And where were they taken from?
Sometimes they're taken right on the street.
Okay.
Sometimes they're taken from different levels of the building, of Farnham 1600 Building.
Okay.
Sometimes they're taken from the garage area.
And you, did you decide to take those as a response to communication with the police about?
No. We started, I started doing that along with the agreement of the city council.
Okay.
That our complaints were happening so much, and they were becoming so severe, that we decided to document them by video. And so that's what we started to do. And we also keep a log, and we have, we have evidence here that supports, there was a huge crowd on December 17th, for example, incredible noise. That was shot from the fourth floor of the, of the Farnham 1600 Building.
Mm-hmm.
So we're able to document everything that we have talked to you about today.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I would like to add, I have a police report for the robbery.
Okay.
And we couldn't come up with a suspect because I was unable to identify him. It was dark out. I was excited. I was upset. But we do have a police report.
Thank you. Mr. Kellogg, could you come in?
Courtney Kellogg, 6957 North 39th Avenue.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Kellogg, a lot of this testimony days is disturbing. Just a little while ago, you know, we approved, again, your application for manager. And, you know, as you implied, as we were going through that process, that you were a qualified and responsible manager. And, but to be a manager, your job is to make sure all the rules and regulations of the laws are followed. And I believe, I was trying to make notes during your testimony, I mean, you stated that you have a good reputation, but I think you have to be aware that your bar does not. Now, I would take it personally away from you, but there is, there has obviously been a lot of disturbances at the bar. And I don't think, I mean, according to the police and according to the residents, I don't think, to the other gentleman's testimony, that it is the residents that live around there, their duty or their obligation to continue to come to you to tell you. I think you, as the manager, that's your job. I mean, that is your job to make sure that you are running a business that abides by the law and that you are a good neighbor. I don't see at all that these people are required to come to you and try to work it out with you. You should be doing that on your own. I mean, as a responsible business owner there, and you obviously have to be aware of, I mean, the police have said, they have, they have talked to you. The residents, I mean, the complaints are quite severe. And I would think that as that business owner in that area, you would be extremely concerned with that and not just say, you know, "These things are outside on the sidewalk." That's their business. I don't have anything to do with it. Because obviously, if these people are coming out of your bar, they're intoxicated, they're being served, they're drinking too much, and you've got to expect this to go on outside, or heaven forbid, they'll get in an accident on the way home and get killed also. So in my opinion, these people aren't, to the one gentleman's point, nitpicking at all. They live there. They have rights, too. And I think as a business owner in that area, like I said before, it's not their responsibility to come to you and try to work it out. If they feel like they need to go to the police to be safe, they have every right to do that. And it sounds, by what the officers have said, and Captain Gonzalez, is they have encouraged these residents to do that also. So I mean, do you have any comment about that? I, it just bothers me that, that you continued, I mean, you said at one time, you didn't know about these issues. I can't see how you couldn't have known about these issues until today.
Again, the issues that they're talking about, some of the issues that were brought up before that some of the city council members were issues that just didn't make any sense to me. One, one time, they said one woman was attacked by five black men, and the woman said that they came from Silhouettes Lounge, and that was down the street. I had, I had no idea where that came from. The lady said that she, she had a video cameras taken from her. I asked the police, I said, "Well, who did it?" They said, "There was no one. There was no person named." So a lot of these, a lot of these things are, things are being said that we, I have no idea, because I asked questions, and they can't give me an answer to.
Well, I understand what you're saying. If you're, if the neighbors are coming to you, and, and perhaps, or residents, or people in the area are telling you things that you think are a little fuzzy. But I think the, the police department has plenty of things that are documented, that are accurate, that show that there has been disturbances and that there's been multiple times that there has been problems there. I guess my point I just want to make is, as the manager, I think it's your responsibility to be aware of these things, and it's your responsibility to reach out to the neighbors and say, "What can I do to be a better neighbor?" rather than to sit back and think they should be coming to you. You should be reaching out to them.
And we have, we have put in place, again, extra security for the outside. We've also, again, more than happy to talk to any of the residences that still feel they had issues with Silhouettes Lounge. We have put in a lot of measures to make sure that it was safe outside. And the police reports are, and police being called are being called by the residences before the club even, even lets out, before we are able to even disperse the crowd normally. So there's no, there's no issues outside other than that. So we have, have put in place, our security is very, very strong.
All right. I appreciate that. But I will say, and you could just go ahead and be seated, but if, if there are some incidences, like the officer said, and Captain Gonzalez said there's sometimes six to 12 officers being called there, that concerns me, too, that we're exhausting our OPD resources in one area when there's a lot of other areas in town, they need their attention, too.
And that's just to disperse a big crowd outside that only comes, that's out. That's what the, the police officers are there for, normally, is to disperse the crowd.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could either the police captain or the police lieutenant return to the podium?
Kathy Gonzalez, Southeast.
Captain, just, thank you. As a follow-up to my colleague's question, you stated there could be up to 12 officers on location, I mean, dispersing the crowd?
There have been instances where up to 12 officers have been there based on what had happened. That's correct.
And how many officers do you have at your disposal?
It just depends on any given night. Go ahead, Dave.
Just approximately.
On any given night at that hour, maybe 20.
So...
In the whole Southeast precinct.
So that's out of the whole Southeast precinct?
We also have, right.
At times, you could have approximately 60 to 70 percent of your officers on this, at this one location, correct?
We also have, sometimes, like depending on the times, we have a gang unit that officers will come, and also a utility crew that rovers. It depends. So that is specifically assigned to Southeast, yes.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth?
Tom Mumgarth, deputy city attorney.
Tom, I'm going to, I'm going to read something for you here. This is out of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission Rules and Regulations, and it's Section 19.01F disturbance. And it says here, "No licensee or partner principal agent or employee of any license shall allow any unreasonable disturbance as such terms defined hereunder to continue without taking these steps as set forth hereunder within a license premises or in an adjacent related outdoor area." I don't know if you're familiar with that or not.
Yes, that's part of the Liquor Control Commission Regulations.
Yes.
That regulation makes a licensee responsible for disturbances that occur either in their license premises or in the adjacent, as you say, the outdoor areas. The street in front of this business is an adjacent related outdoor area.
Okay. So it appears to me that maybe our licensee is not complying with the...
Well, the licensee's duty is to not allow disturbances there. They are to take reasonable steps to stop the disturbance, such as send security out to get it stopped. If they can't do that, they're supposed to call police. And they have an overall obligation not to promote the business in such a way to bring people into the area that caused the disturbances. Once they're there, you're responsible for them.
It just appears to me with the, with the scope and the depth of all the complaints and the, the concerns that we've heard from the police department as well as the neighbors is that we're not really doing a good job of, of limiting the disturbances. Would you agree?
Well, there's reason to look further into whether they are doing a good job, yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mumgarth. No further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lieutenant or captain, either one or both, or... Just a couple of questions. The five tavern reports, have they all been associated with silhouettes? You've all been able to determine that they have all been associated with silhouettes? The five tavern reports? Yes, yes. Okay. So they've all been, they've all been determined to be with silhouettes? Okay. Has, has Silhouettes Bar, have they, have they actually ever called police when they've had a large crowd? They've, they've actually called?
Actually, Mr. Goines was working with one of our midnight sergeants and would, if he saw something, he would actually, if he felt like maybe something was going, he would call him and just say, "Hey, listen, there's a very large crowd," or something. He would actually call to say, "Hey, we might need a couple extra officers to assist."
Okay. So the bar has called?
Yeah.
Have they called on a number of occasions, or how, can you give me an idea of, not many? Or what?
I wouldn't have exact, not, not a whole lot of occasions, I think.
Okay. But, but the Silhouettes has been, Silhouettes has, when there have been disturbances, they have called police?
Yes.
Okay. Has there ever been any shots fired?
There were, I believe, two instances that I have upstairs, or I mean, up on the top that were recorded as shots fired.
Okay. Were they tied to silhouettes, or could you determine?
Yeah. I don't, we can't exactly say it was inside the bar, or, you know, they were actually coming from the bar. No.
Okay. And of the fight disturbances, have you been able to determine if all or any of them, or a certain percentage of them that have been paid, that, that when the fight started, they were patrons of silhouettes when, at the end of the evening? You were able to determine that they were patrons of silhouettes when they were involved in a fight disturbance?
I know the one instance that Mr. Kellogg was talking about, specifically, the female had said that she had just been at Silhouettes, or that the people came from Silhouettes, and we had discussed that one in the September meeting in law. But I remember specifically that the crime report had stated that they had come from Silhouettes, and that's why it was determined that it came from the bar.
Okay. And the video that was displayed here with the several occasions, have, have we been able to determine that those were actually Silhouettes patrons or coming from somewhere else?
This is the first time I've seen them, the videos.
Okay. So you don't know whether those were Silhouettes patrons or not? That's the first time you've seen the video?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But, and, but you did say that police, but, but they have called police on occasion when there have been large crowds. So they have been in some, so to say that they haven't been cooperative wouldn't be actually accurate.
They have been cooperative. That's what I'm saying. No, I never said they were not cooperative. They have been cooperative. I've spoken with them on occasions to help them determine what needs to be done to increase their security, et cetera. So that's what I, if I said that, I didn't mean to say that they were not cooperative. That's not my intention at all. I've spoken with both the residence lieutenant Sedleczek, and I met with them. And then I've also spoken, I believe Lieutenant Sedleczek has also, with both Courtney and Toby.
Yeah. Captain, you didn't say that. Let me, let me clarify what, the reason I'm asking the question. It has been implied by others that that, that they have not been as cooperative as they need to be. I just wanted to get from you that they have been cooperative.
Yeah, they've been cooperative with police.
Okay. And you have had, you have had personal conversations with Courtney and Mr. Goines about how they can better do the job?
Yes.
Okay. Have they been receptive?
Yes.
Okay. So you've had, you've had cordial conversations that have, and have they implemented any of the efforts that you have talked about?
I believe they increased security. If I'm not mistaken, I, at one point, they had off-duty officers... off-duty officers, and then they stopped that, but they have T-shirt security that were increased in numbers as well.
Okay. All right. Now, so the video, you wouldn't be able to determine whether those were patrons of silhouettes, or if they were other people that may have just been in the area?
Based on what I'd saw, I'd say they came from silhouettes, just based on the location.
Based on the location?
But I obviously, I wasn't there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think that's all I have. For you, Courtney? There have been statements made that you are the one that needed to reach out to the residents. Have you attempted to do that?
During our meetings with the members of the council, I mentioned to the members of the council, along with the people that were there, that, you know, I've never, no one's ever, I didn't know these things existed, that they would come and talk, and I'd be happy to help, and what I can do with doing that. And since then, since the council, since we were put on probation, there's been no incidences during that time, during the probation time. And again, I haven't communicated with any of these people at all. There are new people here, as a matter of fact.
When were you put on probation? I'm sorry. What was the date of that?
I believe it was back in, it was six-month probation, and there was no incidences during that time.
So, you're saying that there haven't been any incidents inside or outside Silhouettes since the time you've been on probation?
There were no tavern reports or anything during that, at all during that time.
No tavern reports, Captain? Okay. So, during the time that they've been on probation, there haven't been any tavern reports?
There have been.
There have been?
Yeah.
When were you on probation? Do you know?
September.
September?
I think one of the tavern reports that we, the liquor license was not on premise.
Okay. The liquor license was not on premise. Was that the only violation while you were on probation?
Yes. It was taken out and copied and brought back that same night to show the police officer that we did have the liquor license.
Okay. Captain, is that, does your report say something different? Please identify yourselves again, please. Sorry.
That's okay. Captain Kathy Gonzalez, Southeast Precinct.
Lieutenant David Sedleczek, Southeast Precinct.
I've got tavern report made on the 19th of September, some report made on the 24th of September, tavern report October 20th.
And what were those incidents? Do you know? The 19th, what was that one?
A disturbance.
Disturbance?
Right. The 24th was a disturbance. The 20th of October was a disturbance. The 6th of February disturbance, and the 4th of March a disturbance. Now, one of those I know was directly related to the liquor license not being on location.
Okay. So, you've recorded, one, two, three, four, five?
Five.
Five incidents since they've been on probation?
Correct.
Can I do have copy of those with me if that'll help?
Okay. I think probably all the council members would like to have that if they don't have it. But, okay.
They're in your mail.
Okay.
I don't have copies of the disturbance.
That's fine. That's okay.
And I have those tavern reports.
Okay. Courtney, if I could have you come up again. Were you aware of those five tavern reports since we've been on probation?
Not until a month ago. You guys don't have a copy of those tavern reports, and when Captain Gonzalez called me, she told me about those tavern reports. I did not, I was not aware of those until then.
You didn't know about them until about a month ago?
About a month ago. And if you read the nature of the tavern reports, it really has nothing to do with major violence or anything against the liquor license itself. One of the tavern reports we've gotten was, the lady said her camera, her video camera got taken from her, and they connected that to Silhouettes Lounge when she didn't have a person that took it from her. So, they said Silhouettes Lounge was liable, and I don't know how that could be. So, if you read the tavern reports, it doesn't connect to Silhouettes Lounge, except for one, the tavern report. There was one with one of the security guards spraying mace, and he was terminated immediately because that was uncalled for.
So, one of the tavern reports, did that have to do with mace, spraying mace? Is that what it was? And that person was terminated?
He was terminated, yes.
Okay. And the other one had, so one had to do with somebody spraying mace, and you responded to that by terminating that person?
Absolutely.
One of the other disturbances, and one of the other areas during that time was not display of your liquor license, and that was corrected?
It was brought down and shown to the police that same night.
Okay. But the other three are disturbances?
One disturbance is a woman, lady said she got her video camera taken from her by a patron and said that it was from Silhouettes Lounge.
Okay. Captain, how did we tie that to Silhouettes Lounge if we didn't have a suspect? Or Lieutenant?
There was also, I was there for...
You need to come up there. Come to the microphone.
Can I identify yourself, please?
Because you had Mr. Goings who said that he was outside and said that there were police outside, and that you couldn't determine who the suspect was.
Yeah. Lieutenant Dave Sedleczek, basically that night, I arrived at the scene, and there was a fight out in front, right in front of the awning at that time.
At Silhouettes?
Yes. And there was a very large crowd. I knew the lady had got her camera taken. I couldn't help her at that time because we had to get the crowd dispersed. We ended up making an arrest, but it ended up being a separate report from the initial robbery because there were so many people in the mall. We had a cruiser some northeast, and they just grabbed one of the guys fighting and arrested him and got him out of there.
Was that one of the nights that Silhouettes called you?
I don't know if Silhouettes called me or if we were...
Okay. But the lady that was assaulted and her camera was taken, do you know that that suspect was a person that came from Silhouettes?
I mean, I couldn't say it 100%, but there was a large crowd out front coming out of the building, so.
Okay. But I mean, okay.
No, I can't say 100% it was.
Okay. You can't say, so, but you did, but you tied it to Silhouettes though, whether, though you knew what, so though you didn't know who the suspect was, you tied that, you kind of tied that situation to Silhouettes?
Yes. We didn't apprehend the suspect.
Okay. Okay. So, you got one instance where it was a license. You got another instance where it was someone was assaulted, but you don't know that they came from Silhouettes. And you have another instance where there was mace sprayed, and that person was terminated immediately. Is that accurate? How do you do, what about the other two disturbances, Courtney?
I think one was there was a large crowd outside.
Okay.
And I think, another one, I think it was someone threw a bottle out of a car window in front of Silhouettes, and they tied the two silhouettes. I think those are the ones I remember that was told to me.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for you. One other, a couple of other questions for Mr. Parker?
Reese Parker, 300 South 16th Street.
Okay. Mr. Parker, have you ever had any occasion to talk to Courtney about the situation? Have you gone down to see him? Have you all had conversation?
The only conversation we had occurred on, I think it was the March 4th incident.
March 4th this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this year. I was outside trying to file a police report because of the disturbance that we had out here. There was also, you know, a very, very large number of people outside, and that's one of the videos that I sent to you guys, so you could review that if you had any questions about that. But Courtney was very agitated that I was filing a police report, and, you know, going through the process that Captain Gonzalez had told us that we should need, that we should go to or go through. He was very, very verbal, very, very loud. Also, one of his other employees was very, very loud. Toby was there as well, but Toby's, you know, he's a pretty professional guy, you know, he didn't really get involved in that. But, yeah, they did, they were very, very loud and yelled at me all the way up into the front door of Farnum 1600. So, that's been the extent of my interactions with Courtney outside of these meetings.
When there was, when there were originally starting to be problems, was there any effort to communicate with him, the concerns that the residents had?
In many, many, many law committee meetings, which you have been in, Councilman Gray...
No, no, no. I don't mean the law committee meetings. I mean, prior to that. I mean, were there any times that you, that, because one of those who's in favor of Courtney keeping his license made the comment that, you know, what he felt should have occurred was that there should have been at least a meeting of residents with Courtney, or at least going down to the lounge and having a discussion with him about the concerns that you had, rather than just going to the police department and rather than just going to videos and so forth to prove your case? Was there ever any attempt to talk to him about the concerns and maybe offering some support or some help?
There's, you know, multiple ways to approach this issue. We would have hoped that they would have approached us in the same way that Oasis did. And when we had problems with Oasis, with noise, they, you know, they came to us and they apologized immediately. They came to our board meetings. We sat down and we talked about it, and that's how I would have hoped that the interaction would have gone, Councilman Gray.
Okay. Thank you. That's about all I have. Just one more comment. I believe Richard Smith, there were, you mentioned that there were some, on Facebook, there were some comments that were made about me. Let me tell you that I was, I'm a Vietnam-era veteran, not a very popular war, 30 years in journalism, not a very popular job. Now I sit on the city council. I have a very thick skin. Thank you all. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
I just want to check. It's thick. I can confirm that. Mr. Mumgarth, would you come back up really quick?
Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney.
There were some questions asking the officers, five various council members, what, whether they were able to link what they saw or what their reports were to this establishment, and whether they were 100% certain of that. Would you take a moment to explain in this forum and in the Liquor Commission what that standard of proof is? Is it 100% certainty? Is it clear and convincing? Is it more likely than not?
It's more likely than not. Circumstantial evidence would typically mean that if the person is there outside the business at closing time in a crowd that has been seen to leave the business, that person was a customer of the business.
So, when you hear the officers say that although they couldn't be 100% certain, they were, like Captain Gonzalez said, where they were standing outside the bar, under the canopy, when you heard Lieutenant Sedleczek say the same thing, what are you, as a lawyer who's constantly before the Liquor Commission, thinking in your mind?
Well, in those circumstances, I tell the commission it doesn't make any difference whether that person was a customer of the business or whether that person was just hanging out outside the business because that was the place to come and have a good fight. The business is responsible for the person they brought into the area.
And is that in part because of the regulation Mr. Mulligan asked you about?
Yes.
And so, it appears to me, and I don't know what your perception was in sitting here, but it appears to me that there's a philosophical disagreement with Mr. Kellogg and the rules as to how much responsibility he has for what occurs within the establishment, and then once you get outside the doors of that establishment. And I heard comments like, "Well, the police are called. That's what their job is. That's why they should be there." Yes. If there's a disturbance, we absolutely want the police there. But as far as the Liquor Commission rules contemplate and the commission looks at it, does the commission, for example, in history, put this in historical context at 15th and Farnum, a past establishment, at 40th and Farnum, on 10th, down by Mr. Breslow's place across the viaduct with those establishments, and I'm sure there's others that I'm leaving out, oh, on Ames Avenue with disturbances outside another establishment? It's my perception that the commission is clearly held, and the cases say, that there is responsibility outside.
Clearly, there is responsibility outside. Now, I would point out that the commission regulations don't prohibit disturbances, period. They prohibit a licensee from allowing disturbances. So, you look at the conduct of the licensee when a disturbance occurs. That works in both directions. Has the licensee done something that creates a situation where a disturbance is going to occur, where there's going to be a fight? If you promote your business in a way which brings people in who are expecting a fight, you are in effect allowing disturbances. If you then have a fight and you don't do anything to break it up, you're allowing disturbances. If you, you're supposed to take reasonable steps to break up a fight, stop a disturbance, whether you're, you know, whether what something is reasonable or not really kind of depends on the circumstances. Certainly, you're not expected to endanger yourself. If it gets to that point, you're supposed to call police. The commission doesn't hold it against you if you call police, but certainly if it happens over and over again, there's a strong implication you're doing something that allows a disturbance.
And so, even though Mr. Kellogg has no citations within the establishment, you have five tavern reports now since he's been placed on probation for some of which are disturbances outside of the established doors, and your opinion with your, is it 30 years' experience now?
Almost.
Has this case been made for a long form?
Certainly for a long form, because the issue before you today is whether there's reason to look further, whether, you know, the decision on whether they should or shouldn't stay in business comes after they come in with the long form, and, you know, basically you're looking at today whether they should be called in front of you to justify their existence.
So, it's kind of like a probable cause hearing?
Very much so, and there certainly is sufficient evidence for that today.
Okay. So, with that basis to try to move this along, I think we've heard enough. We can get to the question the next time this comes up on whether we should renew this license, recommend denial of this license, recommend renewal with restrictions. That's a question for another day. We have to keep in mind what today is all about. We could go on all evening, I suppose, going back and forth from people with different perspectives. But I think that the protesters have established that probable causes to the long form process, so I would make the motion in that regard.
My second.
No, let's do this.
Do number 31 first.
I still have one more light. You cancel? All right. Still have one more light. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. As Chair of the Liquor Committee, and I've been familiar with this particular case with a lot of detail. I've also been a strident supporter over the years of Mr. Kellogg, when he was at the coffee shop, when he was at the showcase, and all of my votes for the silhouette have been for him. I have, from my position as being Chair, made many warnings that this day would come when I could not help him anymore, and I think today is the day that I've reached that limit. I have been a supporter, but today I find enough evidence not to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Barrett? Just repeat your name.
Kathy Barrett.
It seems like a lot of the discussion has come back to your incident with the Cameron being assaulted. What time of the morning was this that it happened?
It was 1:30 in the morning as the crowd was leaving Silhouettes Lounge.
Between Harney and Farnum Street on 16th Street?
Right.
How many businesses are opened at 1:30 in the morning?
One.
One. Which business is that?
Silhouettes.
Okay. Is there a convenience store that's open at 1:30 in the morning on that corner?
No. They close at 9:00 in the winter and 10:00 in the summer.
Okay. So, the likelihood of a large number of people at that, during that time, would be from that open business. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to take item 31 first. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
This is a motion and a second to adopt 31.
Which is the long form.
Which is the long form.
Okay. No further lights. Roll call.
Thompson?
Unfortunately, yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Oh.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stotterd?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The long form is adopted, six to one. Now, on item 30, which is just the protest, we have a motion to place on file?
Motion to place on file.
Okay. Roll call. Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stotterd?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Placed on file, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item removed consent agenda should be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda item numbers 32 and 33 were held on March 15th. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stotterd?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda item numbers 34 through 37 and 39 through 44 begin now. 34 through 37, 39 through 34 begin now. Are there any proponents? Public hearings closed. Second, roll call.
Mr. Jerem is out of the chambers. Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stotterd?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, six to zero. Now, items number 38, the ones we took off the consent agenda, item 38, the resolution city council has hereby approved, making a request for lawmakers on the federal level to propose and endorse legislation that share the financial burden of the... to propose and endorse legislation that share the financial burden of the $1.7 billion between sewer ratepayers of Omaha and the federal government for this unfunded mandate to overhaul the city sewer system. We have a amendment of the whole.
Public hearing on item number 38 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Marty Gray, Public Works Department, asked for your approval with the amendment, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Thompson? Festerson? Gray? Jerome? Mulligan? Stottherd? Mr. President?
Yes.
Amendment of the whole is adopted, seven to zero. Now we'll go to item 45, which is resolution, an agreement between the city and St. Luke's United Methodist Church for implementing the after-school program. We have an amendment.
Public hearing on item number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This program is in my district. I have visited it, and I was impressed with the program as it was laid out, the curriculum. And I was also impressed with the kids who came up to me and spoke with me, many testimonials about being turned around. So I am in favor of this. I do have a, just a logistics question. This is one Buster, Mr. Clerk, I believe we okayed this one in the budget last summer. Wasn't that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, Buster Brown, City Clerk. Yes.
So we're just awarding what we already voted on today?
Correct.
Okay. I move the approval.
This is the amendment.
Yes. Move the approval of the amendment.
Perfect.
No further lights. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson? Gray? Jerome? Mulligan? Stottherd? Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended?
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson? Gray? Jerome? Mulligan? Stottherd? Mr. President? Adopted as amended, seven to zero. Now, item 46 is agreement between the city and YWCA to provide services for citizens in Omaha for the crisis hotline.
Public hearing on item number 46 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson?
There's an amendment here, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I know that times are changing and that we're reinventing ourselves economically and that the role of government being involved in social services is being questioned now. However, I will say that this amount is a doable amount, and I do believe that the government should take some role in helping social problems. And so I'd like to think that this is one that we will support, although we'll have to have conversations over the next few years as to whether or not the bigger picture gets changed. But for right now, I do believe that this is money worthwhile spent. Again, is this an amendment, sir?
Yes, sir.
I move the amendment.
Just a little bit more on that, and I agree with my colleague. This one thing that this particular hotline effort is definitely needed within the formula of what happens in our society. There'd be a lot more trouble. We wouldn't have a resource. We wouldn't have an outlet if we chopped off a couple of these resources. And this particular $50,000 appropriation to run a hotline, I think, is needed within that formula.
It's money well spent.
I certainly agree. No further lights. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson? Gray? Jerome? Mulligan? Stottherd? Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended?
As amended.
Second, roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson? Gray? Jerome? Mulligan? Stottherd? Mr. President? Adopted as amended, seven to zero. Orders on second reading, we'll take 47 and 48 together. They're both ground maintenance. 47, ordering accept the bid from Lawn Care Pharmacy for mowing at the Missouri River Wastewater Treatment Plant. And 48, accept the bid from Tree Farm for ground maintenance at the Pepio Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Public hearing on agenda items 47 and 48 begin now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Next item.
49, orders to approve an amendment to the Cortland Place Number Two LLC Tax Amendment Financing Rel development Agreement to change the legal description to reduce the tax amendment financing and to approve the Cortland Place Loan Agreement.
Public hearing on item number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Next item.
Item 50, special ordinance levying special tax for construction of sidewalks, SWR 2010-01.
Public hearing on item number 50 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Tim O'Brien, the construction engineer, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Next item.
We'll take items 51, 52, and 53 together. They're all special ordinance levying special tax for weeds. 51 is group number 2011-4, 52 is 2011-5, and 53 is 2011-6.
Public hearings on items 51 through 53 begin now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 54 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda item 55 shall be held on third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 56 through 60 shall be held on the second reading.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson? Gray? Jerome? Mulligan? Stottherd? Mr. President?
Yes. Thanks, everyone.
457.
Buy one. Make it do that. Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meeting Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, and Adam Chair.
Chair. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 15, 2011. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 29, 2011, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Motion to approve A and B.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions, D through G.
Motion to approve D through G and adjourn.
Any questions or comments on the resolutions? Oh, yes.
Commissioners, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office. Late yesterday afternoon, I phoned Sharon Burke at your clerk's office. There are two items in Resolution D, CAC 11035 and 11036, that are on because they were held over last week. There's been an additional delay, and I guess we would request that they be held over more or less indefinitely. Without getting into the details, there is some information that we are seeking from the taxpayer to resolve this issue that doesn't seem to be forthcoming as rapidly as we had expected.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So with that, the resolutions would be D minus the two that Mike mentioned, CAC 11035 and 11036?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
And just for the, Sharon did do her job. I just didn't see the little sticky.
Oh, I wasn't calling.
She's watching, though. So it was me, not Sharon. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, and Adam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 15, 2011. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, March 22, 2011. Complete listing is on file in the office of the county clerk comptroller.
Motion to approve A and B.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Good. Motion passes.
Consent agenda, items A through J for a total of 10 items.
Motion to approve. Consent agenda approved.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Then at this time, I would ask Mr. Sandwick to come forward and his guest. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you just state your name and addresses and who you're with?
My name's Harley Sandwick, 3523 Cottonwood Lane.
Paul Apogee, 2115 South 48th Ave., Heroes of the Heartland Foundation, and Vietnam Vets.
The reason I'm here today is to invite all you people personally, since I've known, I think, all of you have been Memorial Park before. And this year, well, I retired this year, so I got to come down here and at least personally invite you, even though sending letters and stuff. And I know I've seen all of you there before. This should be a good year to turn out, too. And the letter we sent has the foundation on it. I want to explain that, too. It's the same people, or with the Vietnam Vets Corporation, we're not allowed to do money foundation fundraising. So we started a nonprofit organization. So if you see the new name on there, it's the same people. We're doing the same thing, and we'll be doing the same Memorial Park, the whole display, the whole works. It's just we had to change the name so that we can afford to keep it going every year. And Paul Apogee is the one that's going to be in charge of the foundation and keeping all that stuff going.
Well, very good.
So it's the main thing, was to invite everybody personally. And I've seen all of you, especially Chris and Deuce and the rest. I don't ever miss anybody. Well, Mike Boyle's not here, but he's usually there every year, there every year, too. Any questions? That was the main thing.
No, and this is actually very appropriate because our, we celebrate National County Government Month in April, and the theme this year is serving our veterans and their families. And so that blends right into then the next month with your ceremony out at Memorial Park, so.
And this is the 50th year anniversary of the start of the Vietnam Vet War. That's why we're making a big production this year. Actually, May 13 is when President Kennedy actually sent the 100 and some thousand there to start the war in Vietnam. That's May 13th, the anniversary, so just inviting all of you, inviting everybody we can invite to be there.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time to come down and do that.
Okay, no problem.
Commissioner Tusha?
Hey, Harley, could I verify something? And I know when I talked to you last, you did not have confirmation yet. Did you want to talk about the traveling wall? Were you able to get that confirmed yet or not? Or am I opening up a can of worms?
Well, not really. Paula knows most of it. We got the wall confirmed. She actually got a hold of them down there, and we personally paid for the wall to get here. We haven't had written confirmation.
Written confirmation from the city.
As you know the most.
There's been some issues as to where to actually display it at.
Okay.
And we've worked out a lot of the details, but we have not received written confirmation from the city of Omaha as to actually the final location on it. And hopefully, within the next few weeks, we do get that. We've been working on this since January, so.
Otherwise, we've.
That's awesome. That's wonderful. That's awesome. Congratulations on being able to bring that here to us. It's nice.
It's been 14 years since it was in Memorial Park, so.
Really?
Yeah. It's time for it to be done again.
Well, thank you for your hard work on that. I appreciate it.
The ceremony at Memorial starts at 11, right?
Right. And if everything goes like it should, it'll be through the whole week. So it'll be from Sunday to Sunday.
On the 29th, the Sunday of the 29th, there will be an escort to bring the wall actually through from the Mid-American Motorplex down by Pacific Junction through Omaha to Memorial Park. And then we got the normal Memorial Day ceremony. And then Saturday, the 4th, we're working on a ceremony to thank our first responders as well as our current military. And then the closing ceremony will be on Sunday, the 5th.
Oh, very good.
Yes, so we're trying to get more of the active-duty military involved this time. So they'll show up on Saturday, all their families, who are the ones that are away right now. We're trying to get them out there, too. And at E's program, they're going to have some counselors down there for families that are going to them right now, so we can recognize those people, too, and at least give them some mental help or not mental help, to talk to them, the main thing. So they're part of the whole group. I know what they're going through. I've been there, done that, but not what these soldiers are going through. I mean, like, all the time, something's going on. So, yes, we got people coming in and talking to all them and their families, and it's a hard time for everybody right now.
Well, very good. Okay, but we'll stay in touch, though, because of our activities during the month of April. How's that?
That'd be just great.
Okay.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Pam.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
With that, we will move to committees, first one being Finance, Commissioners Craft and Morgan.
All right, thank you, Adam Chairman. We've started to have this week the open meeting with the budgets of different department directors, and that has gone quite well. I think yesterday we were pleased. We had probably three hours, I'm guessing, three, four hours. We'll have it again today, and any of you are invited to attend. I think we have the juvenile court today and some others. So, you know, I think we're making good progress on that 4% cut and doing the best that we can. We know it's going to be a tough, challenging year. At the same time, we also know that the department heads are doing their best, too, and they're working with us very much so and have already started good work. Mary Ann, our chairperson, was there for the entire meeting, and I think that was helpful to have the three of us there, asking some questions and getting their input. helpful to have the three of us there, asking some questions and getting their input. So I'm pleased with the change in what we're doing this year.
I think it's going very well, yes.
Very good. So today, at, what time did you say? Following the meeting, isn't it?
Eleven o'clock, and I think we go.
Nine oh three.
In room 903, okay.
We go till, I believe, 2 o'clock.
That's correct.
And there is a, yesterday, Commissioner Rogers and I met with Don Klein and Nicole Goley from the County Attorney's Office, and two representatives from Youth Links, and Kim Culp. And the issue is with LB 800, there are provisions within that law that does not allow us to hold youth that have not been.
Charged.
Charged with anything. So say that there's a youth and they're a runner, they're at home, they run away, they haven't done anything wrong, but they keep running away. Well, they can't go to the youth center starting 2013, you cannot, they cannot be picked up, taken to the youth center and kept there. So what they're trying to do is to figure out where to put these individuals, children who they know are going to run, who if they continue to run, do get in trouble and end up do committing crimes. And so they're going to come and speak and talk much more eloquently than I about the issue to the Finance Committee, because they want to try to figure out a way for us to partner with them to come up with one or two beds in the community that we can use to have these children who are picked up, placed at a facility, at a service, until they can get into court the next day. So it's a complicated issue, and Commissioner Rogers and I thought that it would be best if they, if you heard the conversation a couple of times before we really tried to sit down and figure out a concrete solution to it. So today, we just asked them to come during the Finance Committee meeting to talk about what their issue was, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Might also add, Joe Lorenz, our new Finance Director, Steve Walker, of course, was there, and Kathy, and I'm appreciative of your input very much so, and the additions that you made at that open meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Next, there's just a note under the Child and Youth, that there's a standing committee meeting that is held the first Tuesday of every month at 1:00 in room 903 for that committee. And the next committee is the Human Resources Committee, and the first item is our weekly personnel report from civil service. I'll just, says it presented to you, if you don't have any questions or comments on that. Legislative issues, it's been a pretty busy week, you have the report in front of you. Just so you do know, the two priority bills that we'll be monitoring closely are the Senator Shilts, the LB 684 for provisions to the Advisory Committee for Tourism Travel, and the amendment to that on the makeup of the VBC Council. Also LB 384, which eliminates a commissioner on the Turk and authorizes the single commissioner hearings. That was prioritized by the Revenue Committee, so we want to watch that as well. And the Revenue Committee also watched for the potential amendments to that, LB 457, which is the preliminary notice, and face-to-face meetings for the Board of Equalization. So we want to really watch that one close too, because that's going to be a big cost to the counties. And we've heard from our assessor that it would cost us, which I've asked Mike to try to put in a little bit more detail, but $600,000 just in Douglas County alone it would cost for us to do those preliminary notices. And so we're asked, we need to watch that very closely, because again, it's one of those where the state is mandating us to do something with no funding attached to it.
Madam Chair, a question on that one if I may. Isn't Doug, isn't this only for Douglas County? I mean, aren't we the only county impacted by this bill?
I think it's, it was originally, I thought that they add the other, I thought there was an amendment to add the other counties.
The way that the bill originally started out was that it was going to be for counties of the metropolitan class, and I know the committee's been tinkering back and forth on whether or not it was just going to be a Douglas County measure. Is that your understanding, Michael?
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessor. Actually, my understanding is sort of the opposite of that, that initially it was written to apply to everybody.
Oh.
And a lot of the small counties thought, well, this is silly, because our county is small enough where we have a lot of face-to-face contact before values get final, just because there aren't that many property owners and there aren't that many properties. And so then it was going to get amended to apply to counties, I think with a population of 150,000 or more, which would have encompassed us, obviously, Lancaster County, who's already doing it, and SARP two. Let me add this, it's my understanding that one of the things that might happen with LB 384 is that an amended form of 457, there was initially an amendment proposed to 457, but it had some timing issues, so it never was offered. But it's my understanding that whatever form 457 takes is likely to get poured into LB 384.
How does this, the 457 provision for face-to-face meetings affect the law that they passed a while back that prohibits face-to-face meetings?
Well, I don't know that it necessarily, I don't think the previous law necessarily prohibited face-to-face meetings. What it did do is prohibit single county board commissioner hearings.
Okay, okay.
So there are county boards out there, smaller ones, that actually hear all valuation protests as a board. But in those counties, there often is simply a handful of them, and it's, it's not that difficult to do. It's the larger counties that have gone to a referee system.
That may be something, Rick, that we just asked for a clarification on while we're watching it, so we know for sure which way it went. Both, the, our bills, LB 609, carried by Senator Hirsch, that would require inmates to pay for their stay at the correctional facility, was heard if they have the means. And LB 545, by Senator Paul, carrying it for us, would require inmates to pay a co-pay for medical services if they have means. And it's noted here that both Sean and Mary Early testified, and Mary Early did a really, really good job, they said, during testimony, so.
Good.
The only other one that, LB 106, is Senator Shilts, which authorizes the county sales tax to widen the use of it for transportation infrastructure. Senator Loudon has prioritized this. There are committee amendments that we don't know whether or not they're going to be attached or not, so at this point, I think we just watch it. If you remember, county sales tax was really strictly to be used for public safety purposes. They have, in my opinion, they have both narrowed that portion of it, but widened the use of it to add transportation infrastructure. And so we just have to kind of watch to see what amendments come out of, or if any of them are attached, as to what the makeup of that is. So we'll keep you posted and have another update next week on that. Other than that, I think that's all, unless anybody else has any legislation they want to talk about. And seeing none, we have a layover item, a resolution implementing a hiring freeze for county departments and offices, presented by Commissioners Tusha, Duda, and Kraft. And before you, you have, in your packet, you have a resolution, and to start it off, Commissioner Tusha, do you want to take it?
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everyone. This was brought to our attention last week about a hiring freeze. Before I get into too much detail about a couple of amendments that I'm going to put on to have changed on the resolution, I just want to reiterate with everyone that I brought this hiring freeze to the county because of the fact that we're trying to find other options where we can cut costs. We're asking everybody for a 4% cut this year. And I'm also bringing this because of the fact that I want to try to bring this hiring freeze to minimize layoffs, so that way, we don't hire additional people, bring them in for a couple of weeks, couple of months, and then say, well, I'm sorry, but we don't have the job available anymore. And, you know, that wouldn't be fair to the departments or to the people that we're hiring. So I just wanted to say, also, I didn't bring this to micromanage any departments or elected officials or anything. This is just something, another option that we're trying to look at. I do, however, want to say thank you to all the department heads and all the elected officials that have in the past not hired because of the fact that they either tried to make their 4% budget cut, or because they knew that there was no reason to hire somebody and then have to let them go. So I appreciate many department heads and elected officials that are already doing this, I have not overlooked that. This is just something going forward, and again, that we ask. We strongly urge the elected officials to help us along with this, with this resolution. So on that note, I'm asking for two amendments to be.
Let's have a motion to approve the resolution first.
Okay, motion to approve the resolution as is.
Okay. And now do you want to introduce Sharon?
Okay, I'm introducing two amendments, and I did give everybody a copy of this on, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, where it had originally said, and then it was pulled at the last moment, be it further resolved, that this hiring freeze shall not apply to the hiring of seasonal workers, or to the hiring of employees into positions that were posted prior to the effective date of this resolution. I bring an amendment to add that back on to the current resolution. And then my second amendment, the last paragraph, before I read this, there's a little comment in there that's in italics, that's, I would like to have removed and then add the red comments, which is be it further resolved, that department directors under this board made submit written requests for exceptions to this hiring freeze, to a committee consisting of the county chief's administrator officer, budget and finance director, human resources director, county board chair, and finance committee co-chairs, which shall consider, and I did add, and take action on those requests at an open and published meeting, with a follow-up report to the county commissioners detailing the committee's actions. And basically, what that is saying, we're not going to have the department heads come in front of the board to ask for, to hire a certain individual or individuals. We're going to have a separate committee, whether you want to call it a hiring freeze committee or whatever, that we, that has the following people that I read in there. These people will be able to hear the reasons why a department head needs to hire somebody, they'll have the explanation, this will be an open meeting. That committee would then be able to waive the resolution and grant, if they need somebody hired, either yes or no. They could either refuse them or grant them the opportunity to hire somebody, and this would be final. There would be no appeals, there would be nobody having to come in front of the Board of Commissioners asking to be hired. Whatever this committee, their final say would be it. Again, there would be no appeals. And this is what I am offering as my amendments to the current resolution. Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions on the amendments to the resolution?
My, oh.
Commissioner Morgan?
My thought is, last week when we somewhat, I think all agreed that we would have this without additions, and Mike Boyle had a strong position on it. I mentioned and I voted against laying it over for the reason that I thought there would be amendments. We had kind of an understanding that there wouldn't be amendments, I know I heard that. My thought is that I'd make a motion that we lay this over. I think it's only fair to Commissioner Boyle that he have the opportunity to be heard on this matter. I'm not pleased with the idea of adding back in those that have been posted, because if you're going to do a hiring freeze, now we're changing that, and we did have an understanding we were not going to when the seven of us were all here last week. And my thought is, if they're posted and they bring that to us, then we can listen and do what we think is the right thing to do. And we're not trying to micromanage. I think what we're trying to do is send a strong message that we do have challenges, they're not going to end this year or next year, and we're going to continually face this, and we want to have all of us working as a team to do the, the best we can in reducing our numbers. Yesterday, the clerk of the district court happened to be one of the people that came to our finance meeting, and I'm pleased with what he's been able to do, John Friend, in reducing his staff, I think since he's been here, over 17%, and we commended him for that, thanked him for the work that he's doing. And I think that's what we're doing, is working together as a team. So I would make a motion that if this is going to be added to it, then I think we should lay it over in fairness to Commissioner Boyle.
Is there a second to lay it over? I'll second that motion. And Commissioner Duda?
Well, so now my comments, my light was on earlier, but in response then to the layover motion, once you decide to do a hiring freeze, you need to do it. Don't say we're going to do a hiring freeze in several weeks. I mean, if we're going to do it, we need to, we should do it now. And I am sorry that Commissioner Boyle is not here, but he's on vacation. I also don't think that the county board should hold off on doing anything when a commissioner's on vacation. He's not going to be back next week, we would have to wait at least a couple of weeks before we would have the opportunity to revisit this issue. And it's funny, I didn't quite hear everything the same way. I did not hear that there couldn't be any amendments, or that nothing would be changed to this. I thought this, what we were discussing was before us with these amendments, is part of what was the discussion last week, and we wanted to clarify. My request, when I laid it over last week, was so that we could have something in black and white in front of it, something that we can all read and know exactly what it's going to say. And we do have that, that's what we did not have last week. So therefore, I would like to see us go ahead and take action on this today. Thank you.
I would like to mention that I actually too remember, we went through each paragraph of the resolution as to what would stay and what would go, and what needed to be the layover. The reason I supported the layover was to have clarification of the very last one in particular on the committee, on how it was going to work, whether it be the Finance Committee, whether it be a Hiring Committee, that wording of it needed to be clarified. But I can distinctly remember the people, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Morgan, basically saying they didn't want to support the layover because they thought that people would play with the resolution, if you will. And, and I made the comment that, no, I can guarantee you, nobody will play with it. And while Commissioner Tusha, you have every right to bring amendments to anything that we bring to the board, I just felt we were all on the same page last week, and all we were bringing was a resolution of clarification to what everybody agreed upon at the very end of our discussion. So to me, this is changing that agreement and understanding that we had last week with these amendments. Not that you don't have a right to do that, I don't want you to think that. But we had an agreement as a board that with that layover, it was just clarifying, so we'd had a clean copy, as Commissioner Duda wanted, a clean copy in front of us to vote on. And so I guess there's just, again, how we interpreted what happened last week. Commissioner Tusha?
Ann, thank you for that. And last week was a meeting where we all did not agree, and, and, you know, grant you that, I know there were several commissioners who said they wanted this to stand as is, there would be no private committee, that they would have to come in front of the board. But there were also several commissioners that did not want to go through this again, because it had been through this previously, and they did not want to go through this also again. And I just might know, I did make some notes from last week, and I just want to say, on the amendment that I put back in there, hiring of seasonal workers, at the last minute, we all said, okay, to leave that on. It was, the ones we asked to take off was the mandated, and then the last paragraph about the committee. But I do have a note to leave the paragraph five, leave it on. And so I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'm fine with the seasonal workers, and I'm fine with your addition to the last paragraph, which are additions from what we discussed. And I'm ready to vote for that. I just don't think we ought to include or exclude those that are posted. I mean, I think they ought to come before the committee, we talked about that last week. And what's the harm in that? If they're really needed, necessary, then we can go ahead and approve those that have been posted. And I'm ready to support that, if you're willing to exclude that one part of it for the posted prior to the effective date, and we can approve it today. And I'm certain that I can speak for Mike Boyle, that he would go along with that. And I'm certain that I can speak for Mike Boyle, that he would go along with that and get this matter behind us, if you're receptive to that.
Well, let's, we're kind of out of whack here, because we do have the motion on the floor to lay this over. And I just ask Commissioner Tusha, are you willing to change that part of the resolution? Because then I think that the motion to lay over would go away if those are kept in.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I don't think, I don't know whether my light appears.
Oh, we discovered that, I think, last week, that your light doesn't work anymore.
We did that on purpose.
May I make a comment to Commissioner Morgan?
Sure.
Commissioner Morgan, I've heard from a lot of the department directors since this resolution was brought forward. And while, you know, I respect where you're coming from, as far as those positions that are posted, I just think it's very important for you to know the immediacy of filling some of the positions that have been posted. Three weeks ago, I posted a position for the purchasing agent. By Nebraska state statute, the county board must have a purchasing agent. This purchasing agent, our present purchasing agent, will be retiring on April 15th. I timed everything, so that the interviews would be next week for that position. The director of pharmacy, the same thing, posted several weeks ago. By state law, there has to be a director of pharmacy at the Douglas County House Center. For that director, oh, and then there's the CMHC nurse, which is on the seven to, or the 11 to 7:30 shift. Without filling that position, we're going to be paying pool nurses time and a half. So there are some very, very, and that's just some of them, that's, there's probably about a total of five, that are critical. To wait even further, you know, for next week, to approve those that are already posted, would mean that the interview process won't even begin until possibly two weeks from now. And the higher then, in most cases, our people give two weeks' notice, it'll be two weeks after that. So I just wanted to give you some examples of how the timing of those postings can play havoc on the operations of the departments that are directly under the county board.
And I appreciate that, but in some of those departments, I'm assuming that we have others working in those departments, and they could be the acting purchasing agent. I assume there isn't a one-person operation in purchasing that the person could take over as the acting purchasing director.
But my point is, is that when a person takes on a job, usually you like the person that they're replacing to be on hand to help train that individual. That's just, those are just my, just my comments respectfully given to you.
I appreciate what you're saying. And, you know, I'm, that's why I wanted to approve it last week, so we could move on with it, rather than go through this delay and these extra amendments. So, I deal to whatever the county board majority want to do with this.
Commissioner Duda?
My comments have been covered. Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
As PJ, however, I appreciate your opinion, and I appreciate you asking for a change to that, but I am standing, but what I have put on him is, as my amendments. Thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
Yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading the job postings here. And we have nine that have been posted since the beginning of this year, in addition to however many correction officers we need, okay? And there were six that were posted last year, which include a, three psychiatry, psychiatric nurses, two crime scene investigators, and one deputy director from 9/11. For a total of, other than the number of correction officers, a total of 16 positions, and I believe we have 2,300-plus positions here in the county. To see this go forward, and since five of these positions are deemed critical, we're talking about 11 positions, to see this go forward and to go forward immediately, I think I would support the amendments as they stand.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We do have, first, we'll take up the motion on the floor to lay over for two weeks, because my understanding is Commissioner Boyle will be gone next week, too?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon? Three weeks?
Let me simplify it. Let me withdraw the layover, because I can see that there's no point going through the formality. The only thing I'd like to say is I wish there was support, and I don't think that there is, if we're going to do a hiring freeze, to really implement that in a serious way and send that serious message because of the challenges and what we're going to be facing. And, you know, my hope is that there's going to be more that we're going to do with the city. City Councilman Ben Gray talked to me yesterday about an idea that he has, that I told him to talk to the chairman a bit about, where city and county may be able to put more together in a partnership way, and I think that's what our goal should be. And so, I can see that there's not support for that, so I call for the question.
We will withdraw the motion to lay over. And while I don't necessarily agree with how this came about, I'm going to support it because I support the hiring freeze concept.
Thank you.
But I think that I would ask the board that we be a little bit more considerate of our discussions we have prior to an item than how we handled this one. But I will support it only because I do support the hiring freeze concept. With that, Commissioner Duda?
I just, thank you. I just want to clarify one thing real quick, because I asked, we have this in black and white, and we do. I just want to clarify that what was handed to us, that that is in parentheses and italics in the last paragraph is being stricken.
That's correct.
So, I just want to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
And Chair Person, I'm going to support it also, because I support a hiring freeze, and something is better than nothing. So, we want to get on with it.
Yep, agreed.
Just for clarification, Madam Chair, the motion in second is on the resolution that's before you-
Oh, it's for, at friendly amendments, at the amendments that Commissioner Tusha offered were friendly amendments to the original resolution.
So, yes, so the motion itself is on the resolution-
As amended.
As amended.
With the friendly amendment. Please vote.
Thank you, everyone.
With that, we'll move to the resolution amend, item four, resolution amendment to agreement with O'Hara LLC to administer county blood-body-fluid exposure program. And if you remember, last week, we approved the contract, extension of the contract with O'Hara, and this is just an amendment to that contract for this particular service of the bloody-body-fluid exposure program. Questions or comments? Please vote.
You don't want to know.
Do we have executive session? We have executive session for litigation and-
Madam Chair? Is it, is it possible to add personnel on there?
Uh huh.
Because Commissioner Morgan kind of slipped into something, I was going to talk about executive session, but-
Personnel, litigation, and union negotiations. And before we go in, reminder that the finance committee is meeting at 11 in room 50, or 903, and the administrative services will be meeting at 1:00 in room 903. With that, is there a motion to go into executive session?
We have, our meeting is going to extend till 2:00, and we have that room booked.
903?
903.
Could we meet in the conference room like we did yesterday?
We should be able to move, meet, yeah. Let's move our meeting into the county conference room.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. With that, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Please vote.
Gotcha.